New cadence allows board members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through pre-work sessions. They're typically more casual in format and primarily for the purposes of info gathering, and no formal votes will be taken. We will begin this pre-work session with the discussion of the book Great on Their Behalf. The Board is committed to professional development that focuses on improving student achievement and organizational effectiveness, and this book exemplifies this belief. I will be facilitating the discussion of Part Two, Chapter Seven through Ten, on how our school board can become effective by clarifying priorities. I will begin. Chapter Seven begins with a solid anecdote of one of embarrassment. We've all been in one of these where they were asked, "Are you student-focused?" And some smart aleck board member says she is an eleven out of ten.
Which board member in that?
Anyone to my right. And then, this is a fictional board member. But here's a line that stuck out to me, and I'm going to put you all on the spot, necessarily for book reading, but for an answer to a question. And it's a line on page, I think, 111. "If a community most cares about underwater welding, but students have never been asked to demonstrate their capability in the area, then currently it is not known whether or not any students have this ability." And so the first question I'm going to ask is if you could design a test to measure underwater welding as a school board member, what is your underwater welding? What would you want us to test and examine? Because knowing the answer to that on page 20 is the difference between we hope kids do good and we hope kids learn how to weld underwater. That spoke to me. You don't necessarily have to do it. What I liked about this book, as I'll get to y'all's answers in a second, is that once you've identified that, the book kind of turns into a blueprint for the rest of Chapter Seven, doesn't it? It's got to be specific. You can't just say, "Do good." It has to be measurable, because things that are measured can be shared with your community. I have an anecdote, and I'm on a group thread with a bunch of dads. We normally just walk to school. And one of them said, "Why are we testing the kids again? I already have that data." And I said, "Who do you think the test is for?" And I just pointed out that it helps administrators, it helps teachers. And one of them says, "I'd never thought about it like that." And the other 13 dads all gave the thumbs up to that comment. So I think we do a measuring thing? That's what I want to ask questions. Is it attainable? Goals that can't be accomplished undermine staff? I imagine that if I was a cabinet-level director and the superintendent came to me and said, "Well, they want zero complaints this year, and that's what they're measuring the superintendent?" I'd be like, "Well, that's good." And Lilly, we would like for you to decolonize the entirety of the curriculum, and we would like it done by next March, please. That's not an attainable goal, we all know that. You need to be results-focused, not measure whether something was done, but whether what was done is successful. And finally, time-bound, while a realistic sense of urgency. This one spoke to me because I was reminded the conversations I've had with members of the community that were something like this, and we've all been there. "I complained about this in September, and it's November now. Why do we not have a new curriculum?" Well, we've been teaching. We've been administrating. We've been doing stuff. And so I'm going to start with Ms. Tasha White. Share with us, if you've read this book or thought about this book. What's the thing that you would want to measure?
For underwater welding.
What's the activity that you wished we were always measuring?
How long they can hold their breath.
Oh, you're funny. I meant, let me rephrase the question. They said it was like, you don't give a dang about underwater welding. You care about something of value in the city, school, Decatur.
Oh, right, gotcha.
That we may or may not be measuring, or we should be measuring more. As an outgoing board member, what's the thing you're like, "Hey, for the next four years, measure blank"?
Natasha on her answer, because I appreciate your clarification there, Jane.
Okay, good.
And pull the mic close to you, so that everyone can hear.
That's a good question. Just go with the first thought.
Yeah. Well, I knew you would tell me if my question was bad, so I have to go with you.
That's true, always. I would say that my question was, or what I'd want to know would be around mental health. I think that it was something that was absolutely important and at the forefront pre-COVID, but it is, there is, it's no option now post-COVID. I think, I think there's just the ramifications of COVID we are going to continue to see for a very long time. And I've often spoke on this subject. As adults, we've had, we've had some ways to relieve the pressure and the pain that we felt from COVID, be it maybe drinking, or traveling, or, you know, being able to step away and maybe get it together because from, you know, from the ramifications of COVID. But kids haven't necessarily been able to do that. Or we might not have been able to really show them how to do that. And so I think really focusing on mental health and checking the status of our kids' mental health on a regular basis, and checking in, and making sure that they are, you know, doing okay, not just in math or in reading, but are they doing okay?
Like that.
I would want to know that.
Dana, what would you measure?
I would measure how, um, have reading levels for black students at the middle school. How have, I was just about, how have reading levels at the middle school for black students, from fall three?
As a middle school teacher in particular, I bet that stands out to you. I had a hint, you'd have an answer somewhere along those lines. And me, later on in page 129, it talked about, this, I've jumped to Chapter Eight. Being a board member is a lot like taking a rideshare. A good passenger opens up the lift and tells them where you want to go. If you don't do that, you're not taking a rideshare, right? You're just jumping in someone's car. And then, a great member, if you jumped in the car and you said, they give the example like the highway is shut down. You may want to share that with your driver. Your GPS may not be showing it, but I happen to know that Ponce is shut down today. So I'd love it if you just get there by not going that way. And then a bad rideshare person is saying, "Now turn left, turn right, turn left, turn right. This is how I want to do." And that, that's a very easy one, like this is the thing I don't want to see. I don't want to see data that is disparate for race, for students. I want to make sure that it's not just a goal, but it's a part of everything we do. And it seems like guardrails do that as we measure it. An example of a good guardrail that the author shared that I liked was, "Do not make significant decisions without first engaging with stakeholders impacted by the decision." On page 129, that was great. And then the non-example behind it, we are all guilty of this, and I think all superintendents are guilty of this to a little degree, is here's a good guardrail. Keep parents happy, also on 129. It's impossible. And it's also a tough guardrail. Dana, appreciate you sharing that we should measure that. Dr. Sultan, what would you measure?
I would measure the number of high school students that have lost instructional time because of disciplinary actions.
Does that make sense? Do you want to say why you think that's such an important place to focus?
I think it's important because, namely, to dissect that further, I've got that by race. So what proportion of students of color have lost instructional time because of disciplinary actions? Who is enforcing these rules? How often are we investigating? Those are all things that I would want to understand. Namely, because it seems to me that there's obvious disproportionality how students are disciplined in this district, and that instructional time can be used differently. Different types of discipline. And then, the outcome is never anything positive for the student. So how is that being enforced? How is it being used? Are there any patterns? Are there any trends? Because that directly impacts student outcomes and access to what I wish is, in a public school system, is your right, a right to have access to classrooms. So how are we using discipline and the overlap of access to instructional time?
Thank you. All right, Hans?
I think I'm very, very laser-focused on literacy. If a child does not learn to read, they cannot read to learn. And I think we are already measuring the kind of things that I want to see measured. What I want is to see the worst of that data in front of us every single time we meet. We should look at what those numbers for the free and reduced lunch kits are doing on either the math scores or whatever the latest assessment is, every single time we meet. When we talk about equity, if it is not that thing, if it is not fixing that problem, then we're not fixing what is really the problem. I am appalled at how we do on that front. And it is, I think, the single most important thing that we could possibly do as this body, to end this administration, to change that trajectory.
Thank you. Quick review, and I'll take any comments. And I'm going to ask some members of the caucus what they would measure if they ran the world. Chapter Nine, I think, does a great job of talking about, the board work falls into the categories of goals, guardrails, what you don't want to see, legal, and then everything else is the superintendent. In fact, the school board might be the worst possible place for people to attend to for customer service. Not their job to say, "Well, this is how Sally was treated in her class." It's their job to set the policies in place that oversee Sally, and in many ways, simply can't get involved. And broke it down into four, and there's one that I'm personally very bad at. I kind of wanted to talk about that, that when brought with criticism or compliments is expressing gratitude to our constituents for sharing that, whether that's students or parents, listening to the community, providing feedback, but in a way that we gather information, creating connection. And we all know and hear the power of this. "Oh, you have this issue. You don't need me. You really need to be connected with your teacher. You really need to be connected with Sergio in operations. Oh, you really need somewhere else." And the place that I think is that open invitation, inviting them to learn more about what the board does, as opposed to what we can't do. My answer to this question, and my favorite thing that we measure is, does every student feel a connection to an adult in the building? We've measured a little bit. I think that that alone suggests a level of academic acceptance. I think it suggests a sense of belonging. I love asking people, you know, "What's your connection to education?" And very few people that I know and respect don't have a relationship with a teacher, a relationship with an educator that was formative in their lives. And if we're measuring that, seeing which students don't have that, and actively reaching out to them, we're probably doing a good job. And then Chapter Ten was about understanding assessments. I loved the discussion of criterion versus norm reference, measuring how we're doing versus the norm. And then also the different goal types. If you haven't revisited that section, being proficient, growing, and then comparing groups. I kind of giggled. I think Hans is a big comparison guy, you know, driven by data. How's this group doing versus this group doing? And show me the data and the pie chart.
Not the pie chart.
Not a pie, he hates pie charts. You're right, I'm sorry, the bar graph. I think proficiency and growth are also incredibly important. So a good set of chapters. Like I said, after it introduces that you should be goal-centered, and if the rest of it is a blueprint. I have time for two. Any takers out there? What would you measure? Yeah, I know it. Anybody else? You need to tell the board what you want us to measure. And you two are in the proper department. I love that. So don't just do things, do things that have value. I love that. That is it, unless anyone else has any comments, questions, thoughts? Dr. Whitaker?
No, I will just say thank you so much for engaging in this discussion. As a board, you are very much engaged in this learning on Great on Their behalf. I know that it pushes and pulls us in different ways. I literally tabbed the book, writing the book, running into people's offices with, "Do you see what this says? And this is what this sounds like to me." And, you know, get really excited about learning and teaching. But, you know, that's pretty much who I am. So thank you all for that level of engagement.
Excellent. And we will take January off from the book. And February, Dana, will facilitate Part Two, Step Three, monitoring progress. Please let's get caught up. Dr. Whitaker, would you introduce any new business for discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Hunden. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch. She is going to provide, or actually seek your feedback on an exciting innovation with Dr. Whitaker.
All right. Good afternoon, Board Chair Hunden, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. As you are aware, we have had an opportunity to reimagine our district charter innovation to ensure alignment with our strategic plan and true innovation. Today, I will be sharing information on the vision of amplifying student voice with you, the Board of Education. This initiative is aligned with our strategic accelerator focused on building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture. Specifically, the innovation was envisioned to establish a student member of the Board. We have been working closely with the Georgia School Board Association, GSBA, and our legal team around this possibility. We have received feedback that there are both legal and practical issues with establishing a true voting student member of the Board of Education. Under Georgia law, there are very specific requirements to qualify as a board member, which you're probably familiar with, and which a student would not be able to meet. For example, board members must be elected by the district in a formal election. Second, according to the City of Decatur's charter, school board members must be at least 21 years of age. Finally, board members are required to be elected per terms of not less than four years by state. To move forward, we can, however, establish a student board representative or a student board liaison. This student could be elected by their peers and could provide input into the board discussions outside of executive session. They would also inform the board what their vote would be on matters, instead phrased as a non-binding premise. The establishment of a student board representative or liaison would best be established through the development of regulations rather than policy per GSBA and legal. After benchmarking against other districts throughout the nation, we are proposing a representative be a high school student in grades 10 through 12 for the term in which they would serve. Annual terms would be served from July 1st to June 30th, with school-based elections taking place the prior spring. So at this time, I invite any discussion or input that would help us in guiding, or help guide us in developing such regulations.
So are we thinking this would be a student that would just serve one term, like a one-year term? Or do we think, question for everyone, that this person might do better maybe coming in as a sophomore or a junior and serving two years?
Those are the questions that we're seeking input. You know, if you're saying someone that's going to be in it for at least two years, you would need to select what would be a rising junior?
Right.
If you're saying that they would need to be, they would just serve one year, you would limit it to, I would say, potentially rising seniors, so that they would, you know, have the most background already done. And then when you're thinking about availability in the schedule. So obviously, this could be utilized as an internship, a directed study. There are multiple course codes that I could love to write for each one, utilizing this information. It's just the availability in the schedule is definitely more for a junior or a senior just because they've got, they've actually accumulated more of their credits by that point. But those are some of the different questions or thoughts. Would love to get your guidance on as we develop the reg.
I think there's just a lot of learning that goes into how the board functions, even if it's a liaison that's a non-voting member, which is probably going to be some of the joy of, you know, having a student here. You know, they probably work very closely with Amanda and understanding board policy. And, you know, I wonder if a year may not be long enough. Although I can see the flip side, you know, a senior would probably be somebody who'd have tremendous insight.
And obviously, I would love for that student to be trained by GSBA, and so they would attend our GSBA training. So, headed to Savannah in June, you know, those sorts of things. So those are things just to think about.
I second two years. I think, I think that first year is such a learning curve, and just really getting a grasp on what it's all about and what the background is and what's done. And then that second year, I think, is when they'd really be able to contribute a little bit more and knowing what they know, now they can say, "Well, what about," you know, and really be able to contribute. And so I would lean toward two years as well. I think coming up in their junior year and learning all the background for them, their senior year to really be based on a full year of already seeing what we do back in the back, I think, I think that would be more beneficial.
From a design perspective?
I would argue very strongly against two years. And the reason for it is because you would then be forcing us into a situation where a class would always be skipped. And I think every class ought to have an opportunity to vote one of their own folks in. And I think that we have to be careful about, I agree that, well, I mean, so first of all, I also wanted to just remark that a year on this board does not feel like enough. I just disagree completely. But I'm understanding, I do understand, like, coming up to speed on everything we have to come up to speed. I think we have to be thoughtful about that. But I would not be comfortable moving forward knowing that we would be alternating classes and not allowing every class to participate.
Yeah, but that reason I could lean towards. And I mean, every year is an important year, but you're going to be there. Folks are going to be taking their college entrance exams and things like that. That also would basically lean towards the same year.
Do we have an SGA? Oh, yeah. Have we had conversations with that body?
So, so based upon the feedback here, I would then approach our Student Government Association to help us with what would be the elections, the campaigns, all of those sorts of things. I want to first start with your sentiments and consensus building around that, and then begin the administrative work. But this is truly an innovation that is not existing. And so we're excited to move it forward.
Within Georgia.
Within, yes, within Georgia.
I also want to just say that I, while I recognize that there are logistical challenges to making this a full voting board member, I don't accept that we can't get there. Maybe we can't get there right away. So I would like to know what the path is, whether there is state law that has to be changed, whether we have to adjust our charter, we do have to adjust our charter. What are the things that we can change in order to be able to make this happen? It doesn't have to be, like, I do feel like there could be a special position for this student that is different than the at-large or district-specific board team.
Perfect. We can look into that. And I know, you know, I don't know, it is changing some of the state laws and things that are in place and the City of Decatur charter establishes this as well. So, but we can certainly look into that for the long term.
And I think, I think some of the other point of discussion or consideration is, because in other spaces, we've had discussions about having students or trainees kind of as liaisons to the Board, is how much you want them in confidential spaces. So, and, you know, is it all or nothing? If they're voting, then do they go into confidential spaces? Or if they're not, could it be either or?
We can't put them in executive sessions, legally. We can't let go into that. And then they can't really be voting members as the law thinks that it's expressed to us. If I were to vote for these reasons, so they could share that, so that we're really working on amplifying the student voice. But as far as recording the vote and counting it, we could not, as a curfew.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing in terms of there would be things that they would potentially be voting on, that we would discuss in executive session. And so that would be a barrier, yeah.
How is it done nationally when you do have a full voting member? Do those students tend to participate in executive session and vote on everything? Or, let me, you may not have done that research. This is the question to be answered.
Sure. I read a lot of policies nationally, and they were kind of two perspectives. Some states had somewhere there were students who were allowed to vote, but they still said that they were not allowed to participate in closed or executive session. That was pretty consistent across all of the ones that I read. Other states, similar to kind of where we are, talk about non-precorrigional voting. We were kind of advised, which means I'm going to express it, of course, but it's not going to count. We've kind of been advised to kind of avoid the word "vote" so that there's not confusion or murkiness around that, but rather expressing, you know, kind of where their opinion was. So I have not, like, watched recordings or reached out to talk to any one of those districts yet to see, you know, how does that work? I don't know, discuss an executive session, is that from they may have stayed from? You know, if they don't have all the information. But if that's important, we can look into that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that answered your question.
Okay.
Right. And so I can see, I can see a scenario where if they were to express an opinion, they're going to be expressing opinion on things that they're fully informed on. If we're having to make a vote on something that's based on executive session, then they don't necessarily express the opinion.
I mean, legally, we legally can't vote on something that we haven't discussed anyway in a public forum. Usually, the executive session part is kind of the.
We're figuring out our own stuff.
You know, but we can't vote on anything that isn't going to be made public. So I think that shouldn't be an issue. Have we thought about or talked about if this student would also be a part of the SGA at the school? So then they would kind of be the liaison between the school board and the school, and then have a role there?
I think that's possible. I would think that, I, so I currently have a student, a superintendent advisory council that is made up of a ninth, 10th, and 11th and 12th grader from the high school with alternates in, as well. But I would probably say those are the individuals that would give me more of an SGA type of feel. I think this person is really going to be what would, what's with us as a governance team.
Max solution to the two-year thing?
My solution to the two-year thing would be we would elect a ju- a rising junior as almost an understudy or an intern for the position that can go through the training. It also creates someone who could replace the seniors if they weren't available. And then when we start year two, congratulations, you, you know, you're not. Yeah, in July, you're not getting trained, you, you're kind of sad, you know what's going on.
So a, it's an actual liaison and an alternate.
That's true.
An alternate vice.
So that gives every year, we're still including every year. I like that idea.
I'm trying to find a hole in it. No, no, it seems like a pretty good idea.
I'm going to get a T-shirt that says that. I'm going to find a hole in it.
Yeah, I swear.
All right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Any other questions?
I like that.
Well, I mean, so I, I do want to just express a high level of support for this. I think this is a great idea.
Yes.
I'm excited about it, can't wait to meet students and, and I'm looking forward to this happening.
And I think it's, it's also a good way to get the high school students. They will elect the person. Um, and I think it'll maybe bridge a gap between us and the high school.
And I would love to follow, like, the first one or two or three and just be like, do any of them become board members? Or from seeing the backgrounds, they're like, nope, I would never do that, like, what?
I thought about that, the exciting part of it, you know, as we guys are talking about, you know, homegrown teachers and.
Yeah, right, right.
This is a good pathway to, you know, civic engagement and.
I agree.
We just finished talking about the assessments to measure things, right? And what our goal would be, so it sounds like there's a great opportunity to, to measure some of the outcomes.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitaker and staff, for the presentation. That concludes our pre-work session. We'll now just move directly into our work session. Uh, what? Boom?
Yep. Yep, oh, there we go.
Work session has begun. Thank you for joining us today for our work session. Dr. Whitaker, I believe we, you can start with the first presentation.
Yes, thank you Chair Hearnin. I would like to call on Mrs. Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. She will provide an overview of our two-year literacy plan.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Hearnin, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker, and esteemed board members. I have the pleasure of presenting City Schools of Decatur's Two-Year Literacy Plan. When Dr. Whitaker was selected as superintendent, she was given board priorities, the first being literacy. And I understand why. If we're not teaching children to read, then we're not a school or district. Literacy is a fundamental right, and City Schools of Decatur must do everything we can to ensure that we have literacy for all. We've established our literacy mission, which is to provide students with explicit, systematic, and engaging instruction in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language skills. Instruction grounded in the science of reading. When we do that, our students will have the essential literacy skills needed to be successful and impactful community members. To reach our goal of literacy for all, we will provide students with standard-based instruction using high-quality materials. We will assess our students regularly and adjust our instruction based on student needs. We will train our teachers in the science of reading, which includes the evidence-based reading instructional practices needed to acquire language, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and comprehension. We will champion our students that require additional support in innovative ways. And we'll create a website to inform our families of what the science of reading looks like in the classroom and how to support at home. Before we get to teaching the standards, we must have protected time every day to teach the standards. Beginning next school year, students will receive 120 minutes of literacy instruction in K through 2 classes and 105 minutes of literacy, literacy instruction in grades 3 and 5. You may be wondering why I have science and social studies listed in the literacy plan. Building knowledge in science and social studies is a critical component of comprehension. So think about it this way, I'm a skilled reader who knows a lot about college football. When I read an article about college football, I understand it and have no problem comprehending. I'm a skilled reader. I know nothing about the sport curling. When I read it, I have no idea what I'm reading. That background knowledge is critical even as a skilled reader. Once we have the dedicated time for direct instruction, we have to teach the Georgia standards. Instructional coaches have been trained on using the standard unpacking tool, where teachers determine how a student shows mastery, anticipates common misconceptions, identifies extension and support opportunities, and examines how the standard is assessed on the end of grade or end of course test. It lacks support for our middle and high school teachers in creating syllabi which clearly outlines the standards being taught to improve communication at home. It's our responsibility to provide teachers with high-quality curricular resources. Right now, we have adequate resources to teach phonemic awareness and phonics. While we have the physical resources, our teachers have received limited training in how to implement integrity. During post-planning, kindergarten and first-grade teachers will receive integrity training along with a short refresher again in July. This school year, we started training K through 3 teachers in foundations through focused monthly training followed by classroom coaching, which we will continue. We use Words Their Way in grades 4 and 5, which we will likely move away from by 2025. We use American Reading Company, or ARC, as a primary curricular resource. While it has strength in knowledge building and uses culturally relevant text, the resource is inadequate in the other reading pillars. We will start the textbook adoption process for K grades K through 8 in January, which will be grounded in the science of reading and ensure that we're providing mirrors and windows for our students. Right now, we do not have any common curricular resource in middle school ELA courses. In middle school, we may not adopt a traditional textbook, but we will have at a minimum a vocabulary instructional routine, a morphology or word part spoken sequence, and common texts that all students read. Beginning in August 2024, teachers will participate in a year-long training with a new ELA textbook, a new ELA standard, hand in hand together. So when they implement the following year in August 2025, our teachers feel confident and prepared to provide high-quality instruction for our students. Next year, our teachers will be participating in extensive learning on these new ELA standards and new ELA resources. So teachers will continue using ARC for reading instructions next year. We cannot just stop using ARC without a supportive, comprehensive plan for our teachers, which then ultimately impacts our students. I want to acknowledge the concerns around ARC, specifically with small group reading. Our district reading coaches have already begun working with coaches and schools on using GEOs, a foundations-aligned resource for small group instruction. Please know that ARC materials will be completely phased out by August 2025. Next school year, all students K through 12 will take STAR assessments, which will serve as the universal screener and dyslexia screener. We will no longer take the math test. Moving to the, the STAR assessment allows for coherence across our district K through 12 and alignment with the dyslexia screener. In addition, STAR offers Lolilo, a K through 2 foundational adaptive software, literacy adaptive software, and Freckle for 3 through 12, which provides additional ELA practice based on student STAR data. Three times a year, in addition to the universal screeners, we will monitor student progress and standard mastery through common summative assessments in grades 3 through 8. House Bill 538 requires that all K3 teachers complete an approved science of reading course by July 1st, 2025. For the past three years, CSD has been requiring all K5 teachers to take the Hill Science of Reading course. This course is not on the Georgia DLE approved list because they are an introductory course. While the law requires training for K through 3 teachers, we will require training for K5 teachers. The state, in partnership with Cox Campus and the Rollins Center, is offering a free one-year course to meet this requirement. We will offer release time for our teachers to complete this valuable requirement. There are several programs that are on the approved list, like Letters and Orton-Gillingham. Any teacher that has taken a course on the approved list will be exempt from the state course. And we will continue to offer optional Letters training and the 70-hour Orton-Gillingham course for our teachers. We will create a parent-friendly literacy website that has classroom videos showing what a science of reading classroom looks like, a clear explanation of our dyslexia screening process, and educational resources for our families. IPU will work closely with our dyslexia task force families to ensure that our literacy webpage meets the needs of our CSD families. Our teachers deserve to have a knowledgeable, highly-skilled coach, and we're fortunate that each school will continue to have one coach. All of our coaches will be Letters-trained and will begin a coaching program where they will, where they will learn best practices and how to coach our teachers. So even our coaches deserve a coach. Right now, we have some very highly-trained teachers in schools that have fewer struggling readers. And then we have several highly-trained skilled teachers where, where we have highly-trained skilled teachers with few struggling readers, and then we have the reverse. And we need to be innovative about how we serve our students. Because we're so geographically small, we're considering having some of our Wilson Reading Intervention trained teachers work with students across schools. We've improved our partnership with Decatur Housing Authority. We've already offered parent workshops to support our families with literacy at home. Excitedly, we've trained the tutors in phonics instruction and provided quality instructional materials graciously funded by the Decatur Education Foundation. The materials include culturally relevant student decodable book packs based on each student's reading data and science and social studies materials to preview content for an upcoming unit. If shown impactful, we'll duplicate it at each school's extended-day tutoring program. While compromise may be an option for many things, ensuring literacy for all is a non-negotiable. Thank you for making literacy a CSD priority. What questions do you have?
Well, first, I would like to say thank you for a very robust presentation. And I appreciate the, the timeline especially, because those are, to Jane's point, a lot of questions that we get if, if they hear, okay, we're going to be implementing STAR, but then if it's not done by next month, I thought you were going to be implementing STAR. And so that, I, I do, I really do appreciate that. So when we get those questions, we can say when things are going to be phased out and phased in and why. Teacher burnout, of course, is the number one thing, and we don't want to contribute to that. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness with the timeline. When you talked about the schedule for the reading requirement, every minute for K through 2 and the 105, the 3 through 5, where are they currently? So I can kind of get a gauge of what, what is it increasing to?
So it varies.
It varies, okay.
It does. It really does vary. And a lot of the time has been very interdisciplinary. Um, and we know that we have been lacking in our science and social studies direct instruction, really getting into it. So reading a book about magnets is not the same as getting into the magnets and using them. And so we've really tried to allocate time where we can do some of that interdisciplinary, but then also provide, you know, structured time for, for students to really dig deep into the curriculum. But it really varies from school to school. And we're hoping by, when we make this streamlined at a district level, it, it will be more efficient and we can provide better support when we have common systems and structures in place.
Makes sense. Okay, so at this point, we don't know what they will have to take away from, what each school will potentially have to take away from in order to get, in order to meet this. So that'll be forthcoming, I guess. Right?
Yeah.
My, my concern is, um, how they will, how each school will be able to find this time? And is there going to be direction to each school on where they could potentially find this time? But not, you know, like Spanish, for example, it was a really huge conversation here a few years ago and, and establishing a certain set of amount of minutes for Spanish, right? So we'd want to know, is, is that potentially going to be, yeah, is that protected? And, and where are they going to find this time?
Yeah. Spanish is not going away. Um, but we have looked at, at K2 and at 35. We have built Shell schedules for schools to say, this is what, these, these are your minutes, this is how it would work. Even built-in transition time, because we know that kids have to move and go places. Um, so I'm working closely with Karen Newton-Scott on making sure that our, our schools are aware and know how to make this work. When they have their schedule, they will present it to Ms. Newton-Scott and myself. And we can give feedback and really partner with them on that.
For the matching of the most highly skilled and potential teacher with the student needing most support, could you kind of expand on what you're thinking or meaning by that? Is it that at the start of the year, if a student has particular reading needs, they would, imagine if they're up in the first grade, if they would go into a particular class or yeah, wishing that students would get called out, what are you, what are you, project?
Yeah, so the student data would drive that decision for that school year. So at the beginning of the year, we're doing our screening. And then continue, you know, with students are kind of like a flow chart. If they're, you know, show that they're struggling in one area, let's say phonics, then we may give them a word-reading survey. And then, all right, we can pinpoint that, all right? So we know that they need a lot of support around short A, okay? So really narrowing down to what they need. And then using our Wilson Reading Intervention teachers. So this is a high level of training that about 25 teachers receive during the summer. And it's intensive training. Depending on kind of how any of our staff allocations go, this would be a great place for, to have a floater interventionist, where now I know something really specific the student needs, I've got the skill set, and I can move between a, you know, Westchester and Claremont really easily because we're close to one another. Right now, we have some teachers that are Wilson Reading-trained, and they don't have as many strugglers, but then another school, there are none. And so we, we need to make sure that if we, if everybody can't be trained, it's, it's very expensive, it's a lot of time, but let's, let's move our folks to really meet the needs of our kids.
Are we going to pay this to teachers, addendums, bonus, some kind of differential compensation for now having to move between schools? for now having to move between schools and being the ones, I mean, so they are bringing a higher level of skill to the table. They're also, you know, teaching the children with most challenges. I just want to make sure that we're being fair to the teachers as well that we're asking that of.
I will say that we can definitely look into that. Obviously, if they're moving between schools, they will be able to, we will obviously budget for mileage as any itinerant teacher would. They would receive mileage for moving between schools. Having the additional credential, we want to make sure that we look at all of the ways that our teachers get additional credentials and make sure that we are putting that dollar amount and applying that consistently. So I can't say, I will say, we'll look into it because I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity. I think we should get additional teachers Wilson Reading trained to that degree. And I think that's where the money should go.
But it's, and I think my question's a little bit more specific because it is really the nature of what we're asking the specific teachers to do. You know, I mean, so putting it in engineering terms, if I have a project that's been managed extremely well up to this point, then all it needs is me to watch it carefully. That's an easy project. If there's a project that is falling apart, or whoever is managing it before did not do what they needed to do, and I have to now correct all of it, that is a different paying role. And so what we're asking is the teacher to take on potentially a more challenging instruction, I'm presuming. And I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that. If we are having a contingent of teachers that we're asking to do potentially a more intensive, focused, and frankly, a challenging role to help our people to also be rewarding.
I think that could get tricky though. Because, I mean, you know, I think potentially all teachers, I mean, you know, if you're in a general ed class, then you're going to have mixed law students. Also, you know, you have, we already have itinerant teachers, you know, yes, well, teachers who go from building to building.
Yeah, so that's why I said I will need to, let me look into it. Because providing intervention, yes, you're highly trained and highly skilled because you've had additional professional learning to do that. At the same time, multiple people have additional credentials to meet the needs of students, and we don't necessarily differentiate their pay. But that is something that we can look into.
I did have a couple of other questions. Oh, I don't want to hesitate. I think Dr. Carmen was asking some questions. And I'm, okay, I wanted to. I think I wanted to, one, also thank parents, some of whom are here and have been so vocal and active on this particular issue. I think it would be kind of giving us the impetus to push very hard. You had just mentioned interventions. I know on the one chart that you showed with the circles around it, I think, I can't remember the exact title of the bucket on the right, but that is probably where interventions sit. I just want to make sure we're explicit about how that works. Did not go with that. Yeah, so additional reading support. That bucket holds all like MTSs and other associated structured intervention. Okay, very good. We talked a little bit about some of the literacy support at DHA. I also wanted to ask about not just K-5, but also some of the pre-K stuff that might be needed. Is that something that's also on the agenda since literacy, we know, is really birthed through?
So.
Year one. But that is, not that I'm saying.
Are you sure?
The, I just want to make sure that we're also thinking about that since there's such a huge element in it.
Yeah, and this really is, so this is just the beginning. So this is really, in my opinion, this is our level set. This is our, kind of the base of where we're starting to get things kind of right and set. We have tremendous opportunities to go much further with this, especially through some of our charter initiatives and charter innovations. So think of this as our beginning point and not the last time that you'll hear me talk about literacy over the next two years.
Well, Chair Hearn, what excites me most about literacy for all is that it is truly all. So our strategic partnerships, and you mentioned them, with the Decatur Housing Authority, with the Decatur Education Foundation, and our reading experts and families will ensure that all of our families, as well as our students, understand how we teach all students how to read here in Decatur. So that's exciting to me. And it's more than just, you know, rhetoric. It's the passion and really one of the reasons why I got into business in the first place, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. I guess please introduce the next presentation.
Yes, and I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch. She will present the findings from the 2025-2026 calendar survey and our options.
Good afternoon again, board members and Superintendent Whitaker. Today, I will be presenting you with an update on the development of the 2025-2026 academic calendar. The calendar develops priorities, district priorities, and stakeholder feedback. Today, I will share with you the data that was gathered from the Calendar Development Input Survey. This will also include teacher feedback on the early release professional learning date. It will highlight recommendations and considerations that were generated as a result of the identified priorities and survey data. Two calendar options will be shared that reflect these recommendations and considerations. Our commitments going forward will also be presented. Finally, I will invite discussion of these calendar options. I would like to start by publicly thanking everyone who took the time to complete the survey. I am delighted to report that we received a total of 1,980 responses to the Calendar Input Survey. The overwhelming majority of respondents, about 79%, identified as parents. The next largest group of respondents identified as CSD employees. 0.8% were teachers, 3.5% were CSD employees and parents, 2.3% were school-based employees other than teachers, and 1.1% were district office employees. Together, this means that 17.7% of respondents identified as CSD employees. The third largest group of respondents were our current students, at 5.2%. The remainder of respondents fell into other categories such as residents, community partners, or parents of former or future students. For those of you who, like me, may enjoy doing calculations, this does total to greater than 100%. This is because the single category of CSD employee and parent of CSD student was included in the percentages of both the parent category and the employee category here. Their responses were only calculated once when analyzing the data. This slide highlights some of the overall preferences expressed in the survey. From looking at ratings of extremely desirable or desirable, week-long breaks in September and February came out on top. 83.1% of respondents gave it a rating of extremely desirable or desirable. Ending the school year before Memorial Day is also a strong preference, with 81.9% rating this as extremely desirable or desirable. And right behind this was starting the school year on or after August 1st, with 81.6% of respondents rating this as extremely desirable or desirable. Stakeholders were also asked about their preference for the first day of school. Monday, August 4th was ranked as the preference for the first day of school by 62.5% of the survey respondents. Now, to be transparent, while maintaining week-long breaks, ending school before Memorial Day, and starting school after August 1st are all desirable, there are simply not enough days in our school calendars to accommodate all of these preferences. You will see the highest ranked preferences, the week-long break and ending before Memorial Day, reflected in the calendar options being shared for discussion later in this presentation. We also collected feedback specific to the Digital Learning Day and early release days. For the Digital Learning Day, 46% of respondents rated it as extremely desirable or desirable. We broke this down by stakeholder groups to gain some additional insight. When looking only at student responses, the percent indicating desirability increased to 67%. When looking only at CSD employees, the percent indicating desirability increased even more to 76%. This suggests that our students and employees value having the Digital Learning Day. The qualitative feedback on the Digital Learning Day produced some mixed results and opportunities for improvement. Some stakeholders made suggestions to move or eliminate the Digital Learning Day. While many of us likely understand the desire to move the Digital Learning Day to, say, the day after Halloween, we must remember that one of the intentions of this day is to promote civic engagement on Election Day itself. The feedback also suggested a preference for asynchronous learning on the Digital Learning Day. While the determination about the method of instruction for a Digital Learning Day is not necessary for calendar adoption, as a district, we are committed to examining our practices on this day to ensure they most benefit student learning. When asked about the early release days, 56% of respondents strongly agreed or agreed with the inclusion of early release days in the calendar. Student responses yielded a 75% agreement with their inclusion, and CSD employees yielded a 66% agreement. Themes that emerged from the qualitative feedback on early release days focused on frequency, effectiveness, and structure. Some parents and teachers felt the frequency of the early release days were too high. Some stakeholders expressed frustration with the early release days that occurred in close proximity to other breaks. In the calendar options being presented tonight, we have reduced the number of early release days in response to this data. In response to the board request in October, we asked school-based staff specifically to provide feedback on their experiences with the early release days thus far. 96% of teachers reported engaging in professional learning on the early release days. We asked teachers about the relevancy, engagement, value, and contribution to their professional growth of the early release days. Agreements ranged from 54% to 72% in these categories, as detailed on the slide. Analyzing the qualitative feedback provided more insight into these responses. Some teachers indicated a desire for adjustments to the early release days, making recommendations such as including time for department-based professional learning, providing options to them for their professional learning, and allocating time for grading. We will continue to gather ongoing feedback about the effectiveness of early release days so teachers are supported with instructions to improve student outcomes. The board and district priorities, along with the stakeholder feedback, have resulted in several recommendations you will see in the calendar options for discussion tonight. The first recommendation was to maintain the September and February break. This was the highest rate of preference in the survey. The second recommendation was to end the school year before Memorial Day for students as it was rated the second highest preference. It is also recommended to maintain the Digital Learning Day on Election Day. The inclusion of the Digital Learning Day is valued by both our students and our teachers. One of our priority student outcomes in our strategic plan states that we will cultivate scholars who, among other things, participate in productive civic engagement. The Digital Learning Day on Election Day serves as a model to students for this civic engagement. Finally, it is recommended that we keep early release days on the 2025-2026 calendar. However, we may use so at a reduced number as we work to meet the teachers with instructional time for students. For these reasons, you will see each of the recommendations reflected in the two of the calendar options that are being presented. If we are to keep each of these recommendations, we will need to consider the date for the first day of school. In order to meet the full 180 days of instruction, the first day of school would need to be Wednesday, July 1st. It's similar to our current year calendar as our first day of school was Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. It is also similar to next year's approved calendar where the first day of school will be Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. The second calendar option has the first day of school as Friday, August 1st. If we were to select this option, we would have the desired later start date expressed in the survey, but students would only have 178 days of instruction. As a charter system, we can exercise flexibility on our district calendar. This reduction in instructional days would result in an increase in the number of teacher professional learning days, allowing for additional dedicated PL time to support teacher development. Here, you can see the two calendar options with the recommendations and considerations as described. I'll pause for just a moment to give you a chance to review how the recommendations and considerations have been reflected in the options. And we will have time to discuss, so. Finally, before inviting discussion about the proposed calendars, we would like to make clear a few additional commitments. First, as part of the calendar development process, we have been intentional to help ensure that all truly means all. Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker hosted an interfaith council meeting specifically to gain feedback from diverse faiths on the calendar. We have representatives from the Baha'i, Catholic, Episcopal, Jewish, Muslims, and Presbyterian faiths. With their support, we are co-creating a calendar companion that will provide guidance and considerations for the district, school, and teacher level. Council members are identifying significant holidays in their faith and establishing guidance around these holidays. This companion will include when students might be absent for religious reasons, when major events should avoid being scheduled or test, and insight into when students might be engaged in religious rituals such as fasting. Finally, and as suggested earlier in the presentation, we are also committed to engaging in the continuous improvement cycle to enhance our professional learning so that it supports teachers in their craft and yields improved student outcomes for all students. Thank you for the opportunity to share the data from our Calendar Input Survey and the recommendations and considerations that emerged. At this time, I invite any questions or discussions that will guide the next step in the adoption of the 2025-2026 academic calendar. Any feedback may be used to provide the final calendar option.
I have two questions. Well, I think the first thing is to emphasize that in taking all this wonderful feedback into account, that our goal has to be to maintain the appropriate number of days on the calendar. You know, that great presentation by Jennifer Burton, and we have to maximize the amount of time that children have in instructional time. So I think, you know, that was some of your challenge here, was to marry parents' feedback as well as making sure that we're maximizing the time that children have in the classroom. I think another point that's come up a couple of times is why the early release days are on Wednesdays as opposed to being moved to other days of the week. So could you explain some of that?
Yeah, absolutely. That did come up in the survey, and I'm sorry to touch on that. The preferred date when we asked people was, in fact, Fridays. We have some serious concerns about moving an early release date of Friday, both from a, as we talk about the value of instructional time. We're concerned about student absences as well as staff absences. If we are using those for professional learning, the engagement of staff on a Friday afternoon is probably not going to be as high as it would be on another afternoon as well. So there were hesitations about a Friday, using Friday as that professional learning for those reasons. The, in the survey, we asked what days they would prefer. And while Friday was a preferred date, Wednesday was the second choice. And so that is why we maintained the Wednesday on the proposed option.
It also looks like from what you're presenting here with these early release days, that is your understanding that the teachers are getting something out of it? Because if the teachers... Because if the teachers are not getting anything out of it, then I think we need to revisit the concept. But it sounds like you feel like they are using it, using it for appropriate.
Teachers are using it appropriately for professional learning. And I think that if we were to dig a little bit, might be opportunities with pockets of some of our teachers. For example, we know that the data is very good from our teachers who are engaging in the math standards. Ongoing professional learning is part of that day. There might be some pockets of teachers who, we need to make sure that we're encompassing all teachers who teach all students in different non-traditional courses or things like that, so that they also have good opportunities. I'd have to dig a little bit to make sure that that's the case. But we're going to continue to collect that data and make those refinements so that it is meaningful. But yes, overall, it is still meaningful for the teachers.
This may be more of a Dr. Whitaker question, but are there opportunities? I think when we discuss early release days, that there is an exception to continue to partner with community organizations to make sure that there's childcare. I think that's a key point for some parents with early release days, as they get out at one o'clock in the afternoon. And if you're at work, then students get off at work at one o'clock in the afternoon. But I think for some folks who are already in after-school programs, maybe it's seamless. But for people who aren't, who are used to picking their kids up on time, this is where this becomes problematic. So is there opportunities for us to look into other expanded options or planning some of those programs for the students?
Yes, we can definitely look into that. I will say with the reduced number of early release days next year, or not next year, but the year after that, we will be able to know ahead of time which days, which potential providers, and then be able to share that information with the community as we identify those partners.
And my last question is, between option one and option two, just in idling, is the major difference the first day of school?
Correct.
The only difference.
The only difference.
The two days.
But then, one, option two is one hundred and seventy-eight days.
It's a hundred and seventy-eight days, so the school year starts two days later. So students are only there for a hundred and seventy-eight days. Teachers are still one hundred and ninety-day employees, so therefore there are two days that students would not be present, but teachers should have some, you know, opportunity for professional learning for teachers on those days.
And so what happens with those two days? How do you, because I was saying that students had to have a hundred and eighty days. How do you make up those two days?
So you don't. Because we are a charter system, we have the ability to exercise our flexibility on the school calendar if we are doing professional learning things to help support the needs of our district.
And to back up Jima's question, is there, to maximize their student days, is there any wiggle room that you saw in creating this to give the students those two days back other than adjusting the first day of school? And in trying, and I understand, I understand the challenge of trying to incorporate what's your biggest point of feedback? Were there any two days that you could see where they could get those two days back?
So really looking at it, it would either be we shorten one or both of the breaks in September and February. We didn't want to do that based on the stakeholder feedback. We're ending right before Memorial Day, so it would be coming back after a long holiday in that case. The other option is around that long semester break. But again, the way the days kind of fall this year, currently students are getting off on a Friday, the nineteenth. And so if you put an additional day, it would be coming on like a Monday, the twenty-second. And so there really wasn't a lot of chatter around the semester break. I try, I try to.
I know, go forward.
I do, I do, just in the, in the starting the season later, I don't actually mind the two professional days for the parents, but I do think starting the school year on a Friday is just sort of a single day dangling out that, you know, like how much of a day is that going to actually end up being, right? So, so, yeah, I think I'm leaning a little bit more towards having the kids in the classes a little bit earlier.
I'm leaning towards the one hundred and eighty days, just because I know definitely teachers need those professional nine days. And, I mean, we got to figure out for those teachers who are in the reading, using the reading
Science, the science.
That's no longer on the list. And so now they, we got to figure out, you know.
Can we split it? I mean, can we do one hundred and seventy-nine days and start the Thursday? At least that's two days of instruction and you give a teacher, the teacher the extra time?
Jima's like, I want it all.
I kind of like that idea, not starting on a Friday.
Related, the early release days, both calendars are five, correct?
Yes, we just kept out the same right now.
Okay, and what were they this year?
I believe they were nine.
So we had talked about independently that that is two extra days of curriculum that we are building back into the calendar in terms of classroom time.
Well, if you look at the early release days, we're just getting from nine to five, it's four days of about two hours each. So at least eight hours are one of instruction. So that is a great point.
Yeah, and then with, with the later start day, the children aren't getting back that classroom instruction. Because you make, I said, seven hundred and seventy-eight days that versus a hundred and eighty days, that's two days that we can't build back in quite basic classroom instruction. Because my, my challenges, teacher PL, where does, where does, where does the time come from? I mean, there's so many new additions, and I mean, where does that time come from?
Right. So I, I will be, I will speak to lived experiences. I've worked in former charter districts where you've had a over the past probably five to six years, you did not have a hundred and eighty and a hundred and eighty days of instruction. Although it's beneficial, you do have to also allow the teachers the time to plan the work. So as we are in the twen, the summer of 2025, with the new resource in hand and new, and also the new training as far as ELA is concerned, we will need to prepare them all year long. Prior to. So I will be honest, one seventy-nine is a happy medium between one seventy-eight and one eighty. And if the board is comfortable, and I, I don't think we need to solve it today, but I think we needed to get your feedback and continue to work with everyone and be able to bring a recommendation, one calendar based upon the feedback today, to the board next month.
So if we, if we went from nine, nine early release days to four to five, then that's four less opportunities for the teachers to get professional learning, right? Because at this point, they're all, we're using that, that time for, and that's it, eight hours. So I think that that would solve then, if we, if we split that in half and started school on the thirty-first, then they would get that additional hours that were missing from the, from the early release days on the thirtieth and also have two days of school that week instead of one. So I would be in favor of that, starting school on the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
And getting a hundred and seventy-nine days.
Okay.
I did want, just like change of direction, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the Interfaith Council and some of the accommodations. And I, and I think it's important to note that in addition to ensuring that we have resources available for teachers to know not when to schedule summatives, for example, that I think there's probably some clarity that we could provide teachers as well about what constitutes an exused absence. One of the things that we heard pretty clearly was, you know, teacher, or parents, they feel like they have to jump through hoops to get a religious exception allowed. And that should be, the onus should be on us to make that easy, not on them to do the work. And so I just want to make sure that that's a clear part of the process.
Yes, that is, that was something that did come up in our Interfaith Council from the various faiths that were present. And so we talked about, from a governance standpoint, what does that look like for policy, potentially for regulation? And as we are taught, as we move to that portion, we'll make sure. We will, we will. All right.
All right, thank you.
We will prepare the next round. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Do we have another presentation?
Yes, Chair Hurdin, Dr. Lily Huddleston will provide the annual update on student services, which includes student behavior and discipline, social, emotional learning and development, and our universal screener for social, emotional behavior. Dr. Huddleston.
Good afternoon, Chair Hurdin, Vice Chair Dr. Huddleston, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. We'll start with a mid-year update on Over the last two years, the total number of students receiving ISS and OSS has decreased. However, our student discipline data continues to reflect the negative disproportionate outcomes for Black students and students with disabilities. This, this is not acceptable and is not in alignment with our Strategic Accelerator Student Success in All Areas. This year, our goal is to reduce the number of in and out-of-school suspension incidents for both Black students and students with disabilities by five percent. Since December first, students were removed from the typical classroom environment for two hundred and thirty-one days. Thirty-two percent of combined ISS and OSS incidents were assigned to students with disabilities. Seventy percent of combined incidents were assigned to Black students. Fifteen percent of OSS at DHS received OSS more than once. And one student at Beacon Hill received OSS more than once. The number of students receiving ISS more than once was greater, with forty-five percent at DHS and thirteen percent at Beacon Hill Middle School. Now I will provide an overview of district support to proactively improve student behavior outcomes. PBIS is an evidence-based framework to improve and integrate all of the data systems and practices affecting student outcomes every day. Our PBIS district coordinator and PBIS district coach convene monthly meetings with school-based PBIS teams to discuss problems of practice and provide needed support. PBIS teams participated in a two-day Tier One training in August. And school-based teams have completed their tier fidelity inventories in September. And all the staff have taken the self-assessment survey in October. Feedback from these assessments was shared with the district PBIS team, PBIS leadership team, this month. In addition, district staff members provide feedback and one-to-one coaching for school-based teams to support students who have tier three behavior plans and behavior intervention plans. PBIS has functioned to date with limited district resources. We're requesting additional funding to increase professional learning opportunities for PBIS coaches and to provide support for student recognition and school-wide acknowledgement of progress with PBIS. We are excited to be actively involved in rethinking and repurposing the function of in-school suspension. The SPACE, which stands for Students Promoting Accountability, Clarity, and Empowerment, will replace the current ISS framework at Beacon Hill and Cedar High School. The SPACE is a proactive setting designed to help students problem-solve, develop appropriate school and classroom behaviors, and reduce the need for subsequent, for subsequent removal for exclusionary disciplines. The SPACE offers to increase social, emotional, behavioral, and academic support and interventions with in a nurturing and supervised environment. The SPACE facilitators are trained professionals who receive additional resources to help students gain insight into their misbehavior, the plan, appropriate next steps as they transition back into the classroom after this disciplinary incident or event has occurred. The implementation of the SPACE Center represents a shift in which students will have the opportunity to embrace the journey of change and celebrate personal growth. Training of the facilitators will be completed this month, and we have a planned implementation date of January twenty-first. Next, we'll transition into a brief overview of our work related to social, emotional development. According to the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, or CASL, SCL is regarded as an integral part of education and human development. SCL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve goals and feel, and show empathy for others. While SCL is not new for CSD, we currently do not have a cohesive strategy to ensure that SCL is prevalent in all classrooms and implemented with fidelity. From our preliminary audit of SCL practices, fully lower elementary schools, upper elementary schools, and the Cedar Virtual Academy are implementing components of SCL in the classroom lesson, morning circle time, or core lessons facilitated by school counselors. In addition, a number of minutes dedicated to SCL, the three-point phase, and the curriculum or framework vary greatly across schools. Some of the challenges we've identified with SCL implementing SCL instructions are competing priorities, time constraints, and challenges related to devoting instructional time for SCL practices. As such, we've developed a detailed plan for a cohesive district-wide SCL strategy that will include the adoption of an SCL framework and curriculum to be implemented during the twenty-four and twenty-five school year. This project will support the Strategic Accelerator Student Success in All Areas and building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture. Next, I will highlight the results of our social, emotional behaviors program. For the second consecutive year, City Schools of Cedar has utilized the VET to screen for social, emotional, behavioral health risks in students. The VET measures behavioral and emotional risk associated with known repercussions to the development of mental health disorders, which could later contribute to academic problems. So there's risk in everything we do. Driving a car has normal risk. Driving a car on an icy street elevates risk. Driving a car on an icy street in five-degree weather with no snow tires, no salt barriers, while texting, it's based on risk history, it's elevated. So these statements parallel how risk is associated with the VET can be interpreted. It's important to note that risk does not equate a disorder. Training helps us to ensure that risk factors are identified so that we can put protective factors in place to support the confirmed need. The Fall Administration of the VET opens October ninth and closes October twenty-seventh for all students in grades three, six, and nine. Of the twelve hundred sixty-one eligible students, eleven hundred forty, or ninety percent, participated in the screening. According to the Student Outcome Report, nine hundred seventeen, or eighty percent, were identified as having normal risk. One hundred sixty-six students were identified as having elevated risk. And fifty-seven students were identified as being extremely elevated for risk of developing emotional, behavioral, or adjustment problems. After the students were screened, the process to confirm risk and recommend support began. School counselors, psychologists, social workers, and district-level student services staff conducted one-to-one TECAD meetings with two hundred twenty-five students who were identified as being elevated or extremely elevated. A hundred and twenty-eight of the two hundred twenty-two students who were initially identified as the elevated were confirmed for risk after consulting with parents. A decision was made then to continue existing support measures or to refer the students to an array of Tier Two or Tier Three school-based counseling, clinical, or wraparound services. For the next few years, we will build and expand screening capacity in schools. Students in all grade levels will have an increased number. Planned for this growth, we're building and expanding partnerships with community organizations, contractors, universities, and vendors to aid TSB in the goal of screening students to bolster their student wellness and health. I will conclude with a summary of the efforts to improve behavior outcomes in these student levels. We're expanding SCL. We meet monthly with APs to train and calibrate around student discipline issues. Prior to issuing any OSS or more than two days of ISS, all administrators consult with the Director of Resorted Practices and Behavior Support. Our new coordinator, Wraparound Services, is working to connect mental health resources for students with challenging behaviors. We also look forward to partnering with communities and schools to enhance wraparound support. And all instructional staff will attend professional learning facilitated by CT3 to increase their strategies related to classroom management. The workshop is consistent with Resorted Practices, PBIS, and culturally responsive education, and will take place on our first day back after the holiday break. Are there any questions?
The space will be implemented in January.
In January.
And the teacher or the adult will be the space facilitator. What kind of background will they have, I guess? Will they have a counselor background?
So, we have been working with the facilitators of ISS at both schools. They have had forty hours of training this month. Many people from the City Schools Department have been working with them to be able to provide them with a curriculum to use in the space, and they'll have ongoing training and support. So, we're working with the existing ISS facilitators, but providing them additional training.
And then, that's pretty optional.
Yes, yes. Parents have the ability to opt out if they didn't want to.
And then, if the student is at extreme risk, that they would be referred for support. Are they referred for support internally or outside of school?
So, it really depends on the degree of concern. So, after the initial screening, a number of students from the department met with the students, really reviewed information about the students' background and conferred with parents. For most of the students who were elevated and extremely elevated, we were able to refer them internally because we have the Decatur Student Center. Or it might be issues that be addressed by their school counselor. If it was something that was, you know, just a change in their environment that they needed to fix up. And then, if we felt as though it was something that needed to be addressed further, we shared our resource list with the parents to be able to look at outside. But we are very fortunate to be able to have in-house clinical staff to be able to address a wide range of issues.
Can you explain again what the referral process is? So, if a student violates the Code of Conduct or has an occupation in school, when they, when a teacher or a principal can hand down a punishment of OSS or ISS, or when it has to escalate to, I guess, a second opinion or something like that? Is it based on violation? Is it based on the number of days? How would that happen?
So, the vast majority of classroom behavior incidents are managed by teachers, and they report that information through our CTP database. They often connect with parents, and they're able to manage that sort of locally there in the classroom. If it is a level three through five violation of our Code of Conduct, those are the things that are reported into campus. Those are things that rise to the level of being managed by a school-based administrator. So, the next level of having a consultation with a district employee is when, after investigating whatever the incident is, if the administrator feels as though they'll be looking at any out-of-school suspension or more than two days of ISS, that is when they consult with our Director of Resorted Practices to talk through whether or not there are other alternatives to suspension that can be considered and to make sure that we are implementing the code of conduct.
And are the principals aware of all this? Parents within the school?
Yes, the principals are within as well. So, at the high school and the middle school, we typically are working with APs around these issues. Obviously, principals are kept, you know, in the loop. And then, at elementary schools, sometimes we hear from the AP or the principal, but they're definitely aware of this process.
And if it's just one day of ISS, then the AP can just hand down that punishment without having to go through this completely stepwise?
Yes, that's correct. They can use their judgment.
On the slide where we're keeping track of the recidivism rate, are we keeping track or monitoring that with the teachers as well? So, just keeping track of it, is there a particular teacher or teachers that are sending students to ISS or to the principal's office more than others? Is there a way to track that as well with CTP?
Yes, there's a way to drill down, get the information by teacher, and that's information that our team, you know, will be looking at and then working with the APs as a part of the work we do for our monthly AP meeting. We're able to have them bring that data with them so that we can talk through how they can continue to coach teachers around this as well.
At some point, maybe in an executive session, if it's possible, to just get an update on what that's looking like, what, you know, what type of actions are being taken and what we're actually seeing in the classroom would probably be helpful.
To follow up on Tasha, my conclusion from this data is ISS doesn't work in the high school. I mean, forty-five percent recidivism rate means that what we're doing is not changing behavior. So, I appreciate you all stepping outside of that to look one way to improve it. Is PBIS, and this is a great way to ask, I was going to ask about new teachers, but teachers who handed out, are we targeting them with additional training and sort of identifying the teachers that could benefit from it?
And we'll be expanding that work as we go forward. So, bringing in CT3 is in direct response to the teachers sharing some of the needs that they have and being able to glean all of that information from the campus visits and then to immediately put into place the PLE that's necessary for teachers to continue to improve in this area.
Great.
And I think, thinking back on Tasha's thoughts, I would be interested also to hear what the high school and the middle school principals think about this. When I saw these numbers, I had to read them twice. Two hundred and something lost days across multiple, that's a huge amount. Two hundred, I mean, that's a huge number of days. And if it's one or two days here, you know, or across multiple students, that's impactful. And, you know, it's really, really hard to ignore the component of rates here. You're talking about a population of students that makes up a quarter or less of the total population, or seventy percent of the recipients of the discipline here. It's astounding to me. So, I'd be very curious, like Tasha said, to see if there are some trends, and I'd be very curious to know kind of what the principals think. And there must be some room in this AP Professional Learning Series for, you know, for biage training on one time deal, like when you're done, to have this ongoing, ongoing internal work. I think overall, it makes me sad, you know, that two hundred and something days have been lost because of punishment. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do here. And I'm happy that you're passionate about it, but two hundred days makes me really...
In regards to the BEST screening that's been done, you said it was something like twelve hundred students or so that have received that screening across a range of grades. Yeah, and so, outcomes of eighty percent, fifty percent, five percent probably statistically hold across the student population. Right, I mean, you've got a pretty diverse sampling, I think, with a sufficient size. If five percent of the kids are at extreme edge, or I forget what the exact term was, but at extreme risk, that would imply that we have some three hundred students in our schools right now that are at extreme risk. And I'm wondering if there's any way, I know how intensive screening can be, and for eighty percent of the kids effectively not need something from it, is there a way to really laser in on the kids that we think are going to be in that five percent and fifteen percent bucket? Right, my guess is the teachers probably, as far as there are ways to go with the screening, to really just try to rapidly identify those three hundred as soon as we can and then maybe get the screening out later to the kids that are less at risk.
So, okay.
Did I just say a softball?
You did, you did, sorry. So, when, so when we think about, I want you to step away from behavior, but just step away and just think about intervention. So, MTSS, or intervention in general, there is a triangle, a pyramid, if you want to hold it up this way, if you want to hold it up that way. Either way, you have, almost, and we talked about it in cabinet, that perfect triangle of elevated risk. We have to do our due diligence in finding those students, just as Ms. Burton talked about with those that have neural divergence in their way they acquire reading, still the same way around behavior. Because MTSS, although we oftentimes think of it as truly literacy or math intervention, true MTSS is behavioral, is academic, is also looking at attendance. It is MTSS from a structure, that's why I said that's the one thing that we need to really dime, we need to design all over again because when you have a strong MTSS process, it is truly integrated across those areas, and we can't skip a step. So, you can't skip a step to identify a student for special education, and you can't skip a step when it comes to screening for that elevated risk. We have to do our due diligence, if not, we'll be potentially doing harm to children. But, that was, that was the tip. Oh, I didn't know if you had another question or comment about a different topic.
Well, that, I guess, the core of the question has been, do we then have to screen all fifty-seven hundred kids to find the three hundred that's elevated, or do we have other ways to get there?
Ultimately, there is a two-year, a three-year plan to increase the grade levels of intervention across all of our grades. So, we did three, six, and nine this year, next year. We have a full plan of how to increase the screening time, but we just want to make sure we're being thoughtful, we're being intentional in that implementation.
The thing you run, if you don't follow that process, then you run the risk of stereotyping students disproportionately, screening demographics, and then missing students who, you know...
Okay, I'll be, and so that's why I said we can't necessarily do that, but we can...
The flip side of that, though, of course, is that five percent of our seniors aren't going to get anything this year because they're not going to be a part of the first read, so we only get screened. And if the juniors aren't screened next year, then we also miss them as well. I mean, so, I do feel, I recognize those risks, right? Like, this is sort of a rock and a hard place kind of conversation, but either approach feels to me we're missing, and I'm just, you know, if there's a way to not repeal.
I have a question on the AP, the percentage that was highly elevated or somewhat elevated, do we know how many of those children were already receiving some kind of services, either internally or externally or both?
That's a great question. And actually, many of the students who were identified are already receiving support at school who are part of the MTSS process. And that's what came to mind with your question. This isn't our only mechanism for identifying students. We do notice that we may pick up a few more students with internalizing conditions that are happening or experiences, and that's why we want to be able to grow this each year and make sure that we are ready to respond with additional resources and build that as we go. But this is not the only way that students are identified. Sometimes they are self-identifying, they refer themselves to the Decatur Student Center. Parents let us know. We have students who are getting support through five or four. And so, there are multiple mechanisms, but this is one that has to lie in there. And we want to be able to have that to really make sure that we're meeting all genres.
Yeah, that gives me great comfort. Appreciate that. It just sounds like, in effect, we aren't really missing a lot of students. We just haven't put this entire rigorous structure in place, which we are worried. So, that, a lot of...
Well, just in conclusion, I just want to let the community and let the board know that just today, we started, I started my day as a district-wide, or the district leadership PBIS. Our principals were there, assistant principals were there. We had our support staff from Metro Risa was there as well, helping us to really think through our implementation plan and truly fidelity of implementation of PBIS and what it's going to take. And I know that Dr. Huddleston also mentioned the work that we will engage in with CT3 coming on next month with teachers. So, it's about understanding that individual celebrations that students need, but then also the collective body of our educators to understand the needs of our students. And when we marry those two, we'll be able to get to where we are and know that our principals tomorrow will receive this presentation. So, whether or not they already knew all the data, well, pretty much they did, but they'll get it again. Thank you so much, Dr. Huddleston.
Yeah, thank you for the update. Moving on to policies.
Yes, Chair Hurdin, I would like to call Mrs. Amanda Lynch. For first read of policies.
Good afternoon again, board members and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. But today, we have three policies on the agenda for work session. These policies were discussed in three words last month. The recommendation being made is that City Schools Decatur Board of Education accept each of these policies for first read. They will then be available for public comment through assembly. First, we have policy DC, Annual Operating Budget. Based on board feedback last month, the policy was edited to provide clarity around budget adjustments. The previous version required authorization by the board for budget changes in any function for any fund exceeding ten percent. The revised version specifies the superintendent is authorized by the board to transfer appropriations within function as necessary to staff and affect schools. Board approval for any amendment which involves new non-school-based positions or changes in allotment formulas is required. Board approval is required for our general fund department budget transfer between functions when the total of such transfer exceeds one hundred thousand dollars. Special revenue funds of grant budget adjustments up to one million dollars may be made without board approval but reported at the following board meeting as information. Is there any discussion, or may I read the recommendation?
No, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation being made is that City Schools Decatur Board of Education accept policy DC, Annual Operating Budget for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy DC, our annual... For member, Johnson Davis makes motion, may I have a second? Thank you. Ms. White seconds the motion. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Very quickly, I just, by repulsion of the thresholds, we have wanted to align it with already approved procurement thresholds, right? That is what we're trying to find out.
Yeah, we did a lot of research, and we went back to other districts and other consultants to pull the language and make the language a little bit better to meet the feedback.
A hundred thousand was that threshold, right?
Yes.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Lynch, second recommendation?
Secondly, our policy DK, student activities fund management. No changes were made to this policy as discussed in pre-work last month. Is there any discussion, um, I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendation. The recommendation being made is that the city schools of educator board of education accept policy DK, student activities fund management for first read.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy DK, student activities fund management for first read? Board member Utz makes the motion, may I have a second? Thank you, board member White, seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Lynch, the final recommendation?
Lastly, we have policy DJD, expense reimbursement. No changes were made to this policy as discussed in pre-work last month. The recommendation being made is that the city schools of educator board of education accept policy DJD, expense reimbursement for first read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy DJD, expense reimbursements for first read?
Some move.
Board member White makes a motion.
Second.
Board member Utz is in a hurry and seconds the motion. Any discussion? Nope, this is great, I like that we, uh, put it towards the federal mileage rate, which makes it flexible, makes it easy as a district to keep up. Appreciate the forward thinking on the board. Uh, any other discussion? Great, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch, for the policies that are now available for first read online. Uh, this concludes our work session for today. We'll take a ten-minute break, we will come back at 5:00 PM to begin our board meeting. Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences, supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. We will move to the second item on the agenda, approval of board minutes meetings for December twenty twenty-three. Board members, are there any revisions to this agenda as proposed this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Board member White makes a motion, may I have a second? Ava seconds the motion, any discussion of the agenda? Nope, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next agenda item is the approval of minutes from our previous board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve November's regular board minutes?
Motion to approve November's regular board minutes.
Thank you, board member White, may I have a second? Thank you, board member Utz, seconds the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now going to move forward with our other agenda items. We're going to start off with student and staff recognition. Dr. Whitaker, I see a few students and staff in the audience. Any recognitions this evening?
Yes, Chair Herndon, at this time, our chief of school performance, Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, will come to the podium for some special presentations.
Thank you, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solsen, the seeing members of the board, and Dr. Whitaker. Tonight, I have the pleasure of making two presentations, as each person is throwing their principal up front for photographs, and remain for pictures with our board members after all recognitions have been made. For the first presentation, I'd like to present members of the Oakhurst team, Cindy Aldrich and Erin Guerrieri. Talking crap for them. Cindy Aldrich and Erin Guerrieri have been champions of the great work at Oakhurst by presenting at two conferences this semester. In November, they presented the use of podcasting to reach parents and families with important information about how our children grow and learn. In December, the Dynamic Duo presented at the EL National Conference, Conference, to help others make the most of daily, weekly, and monthly flu reading. The way Cindy and Erin continuously enhance their learning and so freely share that knowledge with others is inspiring and an excellent example of what it looks like to be all in. Thank you so much, Cindy and Erin. I am also, you can say, I am also pleased to highlight student accomplishments from our virtual academy under the leadership of Mrs. Heidi Motley. Our first highlight is Christina Enriquez. This year, Christina embarked on her technical school program with the goal of earning her Goodbye Nursing Assistant Certificate alongside her high school diploma. Pursuing her dream of becoming a nurse, she plans to apply to nursing school next year, and we are confident that she will make a compassionate and dedicated nurse. Additionally, Christina has actively contributed to, contributed to our virtual community by serving as a student member of the DVA advisory group and volunteering as a peer mentor. Her commitment and contributions are truly commendable. Tonight, we honor you, Christina. Now, let's turn our attention to Shantavia Shields. Shantavia has excelled with top grades in all of our courses this semester and demonstrated exceptional initiatives by undertaking an additional credit. Beyond meeting and surpassing all academic requirements, she has consistently attended every check-in, every live session, and every instructional opportunity. Notably, Shantavia has taken the extra steps to schedule appointments with her online teachers. Her unwavering dedication serves as a shining example for anyone considering the virtual academy option in BSC. Please join us in honoring Shantavia Shields. At this time, we invite Whitaker and the board members down for a photo opportunity with our students and our teachers that are present around this evening.
Congratulations, good job.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you all. Dr. Whitaker, do you have any comments for the conference reports?
Yes, I do, Chair Hinden. Thank you so much for, first of all, the acknowledgement of all of our staff and phenomenal students, and just really celebrating what it means to be all in Decatur. So, over the past few months, I have taken a deep dive into the strategic plan, all in Decatur, as well as the community engagement data generated to create that document. I found, when asked, what is the greatest need for improvement for C.S.D., respondents indicated policies to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers to be the highest rated. When asked the question to indicate the second greatest need for improvement for C.S.D., respondents indicated financial management of the district. This data is supported by the response to the additional question, what area listed has the greatest potential for improving our school system and also our community? To which the response was, keeping in that same theme, hiring and keeping quality teachers and staff. The second greatest potential for improving our school system and community was increased funding. So by listing all of those data points, I understand why this board created the strategic accelerator of all in Decatur. At our most recent board retreat, we focused on student success in all areas by doing a detailed analysis in an interoperable data system within Infinite Campus, and I cannot wait to share that same tool with staff and even to have a forward-facing public version of that tool. But once again, refocusing on students was a key need highlighted in the strategic plan, and it is foundational to the governance team as we are great on their behalf. Also, we discussed how budget, the master schedule, and human resource allocation demonstrate our values. Therefore, it would be of value for me to share what I call the through line through all of the presentations that were provided last week. City Schools of Decatur is a public school system, not a taxing authority. As a result, we rely on both county and state government to provide the revenues to fulfill our mission and deliver quality educational opportunities to students at C.S.D. These funds are known as our revenue. The revenue sources for F.Y. 24 come from various sources, the largest being taxes at 54%. This is roughly $57 million. The tax digest has historically been used to project our revenue. However, that is not enough. We must engage in face-to-face discussions with our tax assessor and commissioner in order to have a more accurate projection of revenue. We started this conversation actually back when staff and I met with the commissioner, and I look forward to the commissioner as well as the assessor to actually coming to our board and providing a presentation to the community in February. But by engaging in this public discussion, we will be able to reduce the variance between what we are projected to source in tax revenue and what we actually receive in tax revenue. The second largest revenue source comes from the state at 34%, which is roughly $37.8 million. Georgia's funding formula is called the Quality Basic Education or QBE. So when it comes to QBE, taxes, special revenue, and school nutrition, all of those categories can be used for salaries and benefits. And of our F.Y. 24 budget, 79% is personnel, the salaries and budgets for teachers, and also our staff. Of course, these are the individuals that are providing that high-quality educational opportunity. QBE is a funding formula which goes back to the 1980s in Georgia. To measure the number of students, QBE uses a weighted full-time equivalent, otherwise known as F.T.E., student count. We typically call those weighted counts, but the weighted counts do not represent the number of students in the seats. The weighted counts are based upon the students that spend time in each of the various 19 instructional programs. For funding purposes, the class day is divided into six periods, or otherwise known as set. And the school system earns funding based upon the placement of students during each of those various instructional segments, specifically on Tuesdays, actually the first Tuesday, of October, and Thursdays in March, also first Thursday in March. This evening's consent agenda includes the parameters of the budget development for F.Y. 25, with the number one priority being maintaining competitive compensation structure for all employees, and number two being to ensure that we are maximizing QBE funding through coding, scheduling, and staff allotments. This brings me to another key slide from the board retreat. We took the first look at salaries of teachers and non-instructional staff last week. This slide does not include benefits, as January's work session presentation will include them, but with this first pass in mind, let's look at the first column. For an entry-level teacher, you will see C.S.D., which is the yellow bar, ranks eight out of nine as compared to other metro districts. For a mid-career teacher, around 12 years, either seven or eight is the ranking out of nine. And finally, for that end-of-career teacher, salary only, non-inclusive of benefits, the ranking is nine out of nine. Row one are our bachelor's teachers, teachers that have their bachelor's. Row two, masters. Row three, specialists. And row four, teachers that have their doctor's. So, what does this mean for our district and the DHS master schedule? The board, students, and teachers at DHS were presented options that would increase funding from the state by adjusting master schedules. The adjustments will ensure students are in funded classes on state reporting days, which are Tuesdays and Thursdays. Free funding allotments for the district. I want to reiterate what the options stated. When classes will remain as a part of the master schedule? Again, when classes will remain as a part of the master schedule? However, they will be moved to a non-reporting day. Now, what are students currently thinking? Based on the data from the survey and the discussions with our superintendent, middle school, and high school advisory councils, the board you have in front of you, some of the thoughts of our students? So, I meet monthly with the student advisory council, and they receive the same presentation. Of course, I'm a teacher, in teacher-friendly terms, and they have a... And so the board has in front of them the notes and the actual thoughts of our students about the schedule, about the budget parameters, and also about the compensation of their beloved teachers. So, what did they say? The block schedule is preferred over a traditional seven-period day. An environmental scan of all Ivy High School master schedules with teacher planning specifications is also being conducted. Additionally, Mr. Sproul will continue to seek input from all stakeholders, including students, teachers, and families, before any options are submitted for final board approval. Now, what are the implications of this knowledge? We know we are not making any changes due to budget cuts. We know we are optimizing QBE by scheduling to maximize F.T.E. for weighted classes on count day. We also know that strategically budgeting and forecasting will allow us to put more funds towards a compensation package which is competitive for our staff. Remember, we are a district that aims to hire, to retire. These strategies are a must if we are going to raise salaries. I started tonight's comments with an all-in Decatur strategic plan, which refocuses our work on students, their success, and access for all. To that end, I want to remind our community about our Honors Coursework Family webinar, which is scheduled for 6:30 on this Thursday, December 14. Finally, as educators, we continue to learn how to teach and lead while navigating the complexity of an ever-changing and uncertain global society. The superintendent's Interface Council met last week where we convened members of the Baha'i Presbyterian, Islamic, Catholic, Jewish, and Episcopalian faiths. We strategized on how we will ensure all students are seen in the calendar and how staff can become aware of student needs. But we also recognize the existing challenges in our school district, along with the local impact of the conflict in Israel and Gaza. This among the opportunities, this is among the opportunities for growth that has caused us to refocus on what it means to be all in for every student. While true change will take time, the City Schools of Decatur is resolute in our commitment to creating an even higher achieving school community that fosters respect, inclusion, where all truly means all. So, Chair Hinden completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for the chair's report. Good evening. I do not believe we are less than two weeks away from the semester break. On behalf of the board, I want to thank everyone for their continued engagement and the success of our students and our schools. The board is grateful for the high-quality instruction of dedicated staff across C.S.D. We are pleased with Dr. Whitaker and her team for their diligent work on our outlined prior semester. We are excited about the direction of C.S.D. The December board meeting began with an executive session. We followed that up with our first annual legislative luncheon. The luncheon was held here in the Wilson Center. All of the members of the Decab delegation were in attendance. Appreciate them for joining us to hear and discuss our 2024 legislative priorities. I want to also thank Mayor Patty Garrett, City Mayor Inger Andrea Arnold, and several members of the Decatur Commission for participating in our luncheon. We moved on to the pre-work session. We're excited to receive proposal and our vision for amplifying student voices by adding a student representative to the C.S.D. board. When you consider that students are the primary beneficiaries of school board decisions, empowering them with a voice on the board is critical to building an even better school district. We certainly look forward to adding this representation to the board. The work session included additional presentations. There was an update on student services, which included a social-emotional behavior update. The district's two-year literacy plan was unveiled. There are both focus areas for the board. We will continue to monitor them closely. Also want to thank the 1,980 people who responded to the 2025-2026 Calendar Input Survey. The board heard a report on feedback today, along with proposed options and considerations. They are reviewing the options, will provide input to guide the next step in the calendar approval process. The work session concluded with a presentation on CCRPI and S... No, it didn't. Recommended finance policies presented for first reading. I want to remind the public that all presentations are available for assembly in assembly for your review, and of course, there were two board presentations earlier highlighting outstanding Oakhurst educators, Cindy Aldrich and Erin Guerrieri. Thank you for being selected to be champions of the great work of Oakhurst and two E.L. education conferences. We applaud them on being selected and appreciate their commitment to our Oakhurst students. We also learned of the accomplishments of two students who attend our virtual academy, which is under the leadership of Miss Heidi Watley. Congratulations to the students of Christina Denbrika and Shantavia Shields on their academic achievements. Now, we have one more special presentation. Because you popped up over there. Tasha White, day everyone. It literally is. It literally is. Tonight's meeting serves as the last meeting of Board Member Tasha White, who will transition off the board in January. She's given us two great terms of dedicated service, including serving as board chair and vice chair. At the Board Member White was presented a proclamation by Mayor Patty Garrett from the city of Decatur, declaring that officially, December 12th in Decatur is Tasha White Day.
Mary Tasha White Day.
She prefers Mary over Happy, given the season. Dr. Whitaker, I believe you also have a presentation.
Yes, I do. Always counting for from head to toe. So appropriate before we even just lay this, but no, thank you tremendously for your two terms of service. Thank you for entrusting me. I think there is something else coming.
Open at your own time? Well, I don't know.
Okay, I'll do the card later. I'll open the box now.
The card opens.
Okay. Oh, the card is?
Yes, there's a gift in the card.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'll open that one first. Can't believe you're leaving. Well, maybe we can't believe you're not taking us with you. That's awesome. Thank you.
Oh, gift cards for nail bar. Yes, I do like it, my nails done. Yes, yes. You guys know me so well.
Okay, so inside joke real quick, guys. So, most of the time, it is freezing
Twenty degrees.
in here, okay? Freezing. And the only one who remembers to bring extra covering and protection is Janice, right? And there have been times when I thought I was going to bring one, I left it on my bed. I'm like, I forgot my Janice shawl. I forgot my Janice shawl. So, I've been calling it a Janice shawl for like two years. Right? And so, that is that is the story behind the shawl. Now, I have my very own Dana Tossa shawl. Thank you, guys.
Okay, wait, no.
Yeah, because we have Yep. Great.
We're all here.
Yes, we will.
There's the air. There's the air. You can use your shawl. The shawl's low. You can use your shawl.
Yeah. Mind the hole. Mind the hole. For Member White, it has been an honor to serve with you. We are appreciative of all you've done on behalf of CSD. I'd like to invite other board members for some personal remarks about Tasha and her service to CSD, if they have anything to share.
I said this to you, I said this to you personally, but I wanted to say this. When I came onto this board, Carmen and I came onto the board at the same time, we were pretty determined to make some changes. And I think we were frustrated a little bit where the tools weren't. And I think I incorrectly, in hindsight, assigned some of that to Tasha. Tasha inherited a bag of cats and managed to hold it together for long enough for the system to pull through. And I incorrectly questioned your leadership at the time. I have come to deeply respect your insights on students, your passion for the work. I just wanted to make it clear publicly, I was not right. And you have, it's been an absolute fantastic honor working with you.
I'll say that the first thing is that looking at those pictures, it's really hard to let go. I think in positions of leadership like this, longevity, expertise are critical to the vitality and success of all of us. It always brings me joy. It brings me passion to see women of color in positions of leadership. And you've been such an inspiration to me personally. I've learned so much just from hearing the stories you tell, your successes, your wins, your losses. And I think it's, you're taking so much with you out of here. So many stories, so much that you've learned, that I hope that we can still follow you. Like I said, it's really hard to let you go. I personally feel like I've gained a friend. You're a neighbor, you live, I can walk to your house. I'm grateful that I've gained a friend. I'll see you at summer camp. I adore you. You're a great person. So grateful for all the hard work that you've done. Community should be grateful, and we are indebted to you. So, I'm so happy to see wherever you land next, and it's been a joy to work with you.
Tasha, working on your campaign was my first introduction to the role of a school board member. And as Carmen said, you were my inspiration when I decided to run. You have served during some very difficult times and exist desire, and I so appreciate that. Just want to thank you for your service, and I look forward to celebrating Tasha White Day.
Now the water now. But thank you.
Had the opportunity to attend the 200-year bicentennial. And Linda Harris, who's retiring after 35 years, shared a memory that's powerful to Decatur. And Tony Powers shared a memory that was powerful for him about Decatur. I was a former teacher who thought I wanted to run for school board and decided to meet with people. And it was, I don't know, I don't know. And then I had coffee with Tasha White. And the energy. She essentially said that there are few jobs you can do in life that improve and change people's lives. Bill Floyd earlier that day told me anyone running for school board is crazy. He wasn't wrong. Tasha brings an energy and a love to this community as a mother and a friend. And I didn't know if I wanted, I did successfully run for school board again. And again, it's because Tasha told me that I had to. She did two terms, so I had to at least do two terms to be fair. So, when I'm attending the next bicentennial, when someone says my memory of Decatur and why give back and do it, it will be coffee with you. And anything you would like to share or say, follow that up.
Very bittersweet. A lot of people come up to me and said, I bet you're glad that this is your last board meeting. And it has been tough at times, but it's definitely bittersweet. Especially working with this particular governance team that we have sitting up here right now. So, pretty awesome. And I find my, I call myself blessed to have been a part of this team. I thank Mayor Elizabeth Wilson for tapping me on my shoulder in 2015. Much like I told you, you had to run again, James. She told me I had to run. And in that moment, I wasn't sure if it was for me, so I started asking questions. And I met with Julie Rain, whose seat I was going to be taking over. And I wanted to see what shoes I would be filling, and could I fill them? And I met with her numerous times to just gather all of the information that I needed to know that this is the space that I needed to be. And hope it was tough, tough for everybody. But I'm happy that that is not my lasting memory of being on this board. This year has been incredible. Bringing on Dr. Whitaker is definitely going to be the legacy that I leave on this board, for sure. And I'm just grateful that I'm going to continue to be here. I'm not going anywhere. I still have one more in the nest, so I'm not an empty nester yet, by any means. So, I will still be involved. As many of you know, I lost my mother this year, and so I'm just reevaluating things. And I think I will take 24 to continue to heal and think about what my next move will be. So, I appreciate all of you that are here and supported me. And I absolutely appreciate the community that has voted for me to sit in this seat twice. So, I know my board members up here will attest, it's a very surreal moment to go into a voting booth and see your name. I don't know how anybody gets used to it. I've never gotten used to it. And I'm so grateful that my community each time chose my name to represent your children. So, ah, thank you. Thank you. I considered it an honor that I was able to sit in this seat for eight years, and I never took it lightly. So, thank you.
Guess that's the conclusion of the chair's report. I want to wish everyone a great semester break. Reiterate our thanks for your constant breaks as we work to get better and to be great on their behalf. Fellow board members, do you have any thoughts, anything else you'd like to share as part of the chair's report before we move on? Hearing none. We will now move to action items. We did not have any action on executive session items. Dr. Whitaker, can you introduce the proposed mid-year adjustment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to introduce Ms. Luna Broom, our Chief Financial Officer, to provide the mid-year budget update and recommendations for amendment. City and Board Chair Herndon, Madam Vice Chair Dr. Solton, the Senior Director of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker, Community and College. December represents midterm for the district. The district has been in operation for six months of the fiscal year, and we have had an opportunity to analyze current financial operations trends and returns on investments. Based on the analysis, it has been determined that there is a need to amend the current fiscal year 24 budget for general slots and grants. There are requests to amend the general fund budget, which is the district's largest operating budget. This slide shows the general fund revenue sources and expenditures categories in the first column. The board approved the fiscal year 24 budget in the second column, the impact of the midterm request in the third column, and the revised fiscal year 24 budget based off of the requested midterm amendment in the fourth. Total revenues and total expenditures are highlighted in blue. Midterm budget request for revenue totaled an increase of $932,753. The details of the increases will be discussed in the upcoming slide. Midterm budget amendment request for expenditures totaled an increase of $1,166,458. The details of the increase will be discussed in the upcoming slide. The total fiscal impact of the requested amendment to the current fiscal year 24 general fund budget is $233,715. This amount represents the difference between the midterm request revenue of $932,753 and expenditures of $1,156,468. The small table to the right titled Fiscal Year 24 Beginning Fund Balance identifies the funds that were left or the surplus of funds after the collection of all revenue and payment of all expenses in last year's fiscal year 23 budget and the auditive beginning fund balance for fiscal year 23. As you know, the ending fund balance for one year becomes the beginning fund balance of the next year. So, the projected current fiscal year 24 beginning fund balance, when the board approves the budget, was $9.4 million. The actual beginning and auditive fund balance is approximately $14.9 million, which is a $5.4 million variance, are increased from what was initially projected. The $14.9 million is un-audited and subject to slight change. The details of the variances between the projected and actual beginning fund balance will be discussed in detail during the five-year budget review presentation in February. However, some of the factors that contribute to the variance include local taxes paying in $1 million more than what was projected per the tax act. Other revenue sources suggest earnings on investments, summer school tuition, transportation fees, and miscellaneous revenue like facility rentals and surplus pay in $487,000 more than what was projected. QBE state revenue came in $327,731 more than total revenue came in about $1.8 million more than what was projected. Total revenue came in about 1.8 million more than what was projected. Total expenses came in about 1.5 million less than projected. And some of the major variances include over $1 million surplus in instruction and vacant positions. That was also approximately $1.5 million difference in fiscal year 22 Ending Fund Balance and fiscal year 23 projected Beginning Fund Balance. Although the $5 million variance is definitely not ideal, this amount will be extremely instrumental in fiscal year 25 to fund some of the budget's primary priorities, including maintaining a competitive compensation structure, as discussed at the November 28th Board Retreat, in which the Board challenged charge the staff with limiting compensation options to obtain and retain quality staff, funding the 3,000 per person increase in health benefits for non-certified employees, and covering the recently announced four fills are .8 anticipated increase in PRs for fiscal year 25. Additionally, measures have been put in place under Dr. Whitaker's leadership to provide a stronger oversight and management of the budget, including the addition of the controller position, moving to a per pupil expenditure budget to align school budgets with actual expenditures, utilizing a modified zero-based budgeting to justify all operational expenses, establishing a relationship with the tax assessor to gain better insights to tax projections, conducting a three-way match between the personnel budget, position control, and payroll to ensure physicians do not overbudget it, and looking at vacant positions mid-year to determine savings and to amend the budget. In the next table, the first row under the header, which is labeled Design Fund or Fund Balance, is the difference between the budget revenues and expenditures. Initially, when the Board approved the budget, it was projected that revenue would exceed expenditures by $481,596. And that amount would be added to the fund balance. After the mid-year amendment, it is projected that $247,880 will be added back to the fund balance. Highlighting in green is the projected Ending Fund Balance for fiscal year 24. The projected Ending Fund Balance was $9.8 million. And the revised fiscal year 24 Midterm Projected Ending Fund Balance is approximately $15 million, $15 million due primarily to the $5.4 million increase in the Beginning Fund Balance. The fiscal year 24 Projected Ending Fund Balance will be fiscal year 25 Projected Beginning Fund Balance. The fund balance percentage with the mid- is 15%, which is within the Board policy range of 4 to 15%. Are there any questions on the General Fund?
You didn't even write anything down, Lunita. No questions at all.
This is Tasha White Day. The details of the midterm request on the upcoming slide include reallocation of funds in addition to both revenue and expenditure. You will see whether total of the fund requests are negative, which represents a credit. This simply means the addition of revenue. Request under Strategic Accelerator 1, building and sustaining and engaging in inclusive culture. Total midterm investment is $100,000. Request includes $20,000 to increase the translation budget to finance additional translation and support services for non-English speaking families and stakeholders. $80,000 increase to the technology budget for professional services and well-paid prescriptions to enhance and professionalize communication. Strategic Accelerator 2, organizational inshadiveness and excellence. Total midterm investment is $421,007. Request includes $71,981 for the six-month salary of a control physician in the finance department to increase the financial oversight and transparency. Reallocation $68,972 from a budget administrative assistant position will be used to offset the control effect. $17,498 for increase in board salaries to compensate board members for additional work hours, responsibilities, and to align the salaries with those of other school board members. $20,500 for safety audits to assist the district's security operation. $50,000 for a production design component for branding, marketing, and communication. $50,000 usage primarily with the cooling towers. $150,000 for increased energy costs. $120,000 for the pressure washing of district products. Strategic Accelerator 4, students success in all areas. Total investment is $147,709. Request includes $71,981 for the six-month salary of the MPSF director to lead the MPSF program and ensure it is aligned with the Georgia Department of Education. Reallocation of $70,000 from teaching and learning operating expenses to offset the salary of the MPSF director. $100,991 for the six-month salary of two special education teachers to meet student needs. $15,000 to enhance the PBIS program to ensure student success in all areas. $34,393 for college and career online platform to increase family knowledge, family knowledge and opportunities for post-secondary college and career opportunities. The cost of PBIS and the college and career online platform will be offset by $34,656 by eliminating the tri-pod G E I and seven speed surveys, which are included with the Georgia Student Cap Study. $30,000 for data search and support contractors to assist with identification of trends and root causes driving disproportionate outcomes for the district. An analysis of revenue shows that earnings on investment have been trending significantly higher due to increased interest rate. Midterm amendment request is for a $435,000 increase to earnings on investment revenue.
I like that one.
State grants are grants awarded by the Georgia Department of Education that are budgeted under general fund. The district has been awarded a total of $453 in state grants. Grants are budget neutral, neutral, and that both revenue and expenditures will increase by a total of $497,750. Any questions on the General Fund before I go to slot six? There are also requests to amend the slot six budget. This is your current fiscal year 24 slot budget. The midterm request in the revised amended fiscal year 24 budget. There's a request to reduce revenue by $800,000 and expenditures by $600,000, and expenditures are being requested to be reduced by $136,000. The small table to the right titled Fiscal Year 24 Beginning Fund Balance identifies the funds that were left or the surplus of funds after the collection of all revenues and payment of all expenses in last year's fiscal year 23 budget. Initially, the slot six Beginning Fund Balance was predicted to be $1.8 million. However, once we realized that slot funds were coming in lower than anticipated, we drastically reduced spending of slot six funds by approximately $3.2 million, which resulted in revised Beginning Fund Balance of $5 million. Slot six revenue collection began last fiscal year. It is important to leave a healthy reserve slot fund so that there are funds immediately available at the beginning of the next fiscal year. In the next table, the first row under the header, which is labeled Design Fund from the Fund Balance, shows the difference between the budgeted revenues and expenses. The fiscal year 24 budget anticipated that $632,500 will be needed from reserves to balance the budget. After the mid-year amendment of reducing the revenue budget and adding additional expenses, it is anticipated that $1,096,500 will be needed to balance the budget. If the projected revenue is received and all budget funds are expended, the projected Ending Fund Balance for slot six will increase from $1.2 million to $3.9 million, due primarily from the $3.2 million reduction in spending for fiscal year 23. In the upcoming slide, I will review budget amendment requests for slot six. Are there any questions in reference to this slide?
Just a quick question. We're just, we're, as I make sure I fully understand this, we're looking at an $800,000 reduction in presumed revenues? Then why are we having to reduce planned spending by 3.2 million?
That was last year, fiscal year 23.
Okay, so that is not this particular.
Correct.
Got it. All right, that's my question.
That was a shortfall of approximately $1 million in slot for year 23. This year's slot collection is coming in a little less than anticipated, and therefore the request is to reduce the slot six budget by $800,000. Losing the revenue, the expenses will also be reduced by $800,000. Earnings on investments have not traditionally been included in the slot budget due to the insignificant amount previously earned. Due to the increase in earnings, the request is to add $200,000 in revenue for earnings on investments. Other slot six requests include $25,000 for a not-for-sold fee amount for ERP and change management components, $139,000 for the design and permission documents for the district's new flat, and $500,000 for additional amount required for the funding of the legacy track and deal. The Board will be presented federal grants or grants received from the federal government. Grants have stipulations on how the funds are spent in the district and is reimbursed for all allowable budgeted expenses. Grants are budget neutral in that revenue equals expenditures. The initial budget for grants are based on projections from previous received grants. The amount listed in the midterm request are amendments to existing grants or additions of new grants. The initial budget for fiscal year 24 grants was $2,707,18. The revised budget for fiscal year 24 grants is $2,743,038.
Lunita, on the ERP consultant, you have the under reoccurring, it's reoccurring for yes, for the ERP consultant?
Well, yes, we will need it next year, Hoss.
Oh, so just two years? Or are you thinking, well, we're going to get it every year?
I'm thinking next year we'll be ready to implement it.
At most three.
At most three.
Because to, to move to an ERP system is more than a one-year process or project. So it will reoccur, but until it's fully stood up and we're tested, we've ensured everyone is paid accurately, oh, yeah. It will definitely be two years, possibly three.
The district has received approximately $1 million in special education grants, approximately $492,000 entitled grants, and $59,569 in one-time credits. The Board will be presented with an overview of grant funds. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification.
No question, but just in general, a comment. The 5.4 over John, uh, anticipated income is, I mean, it's not great. And I know that literally every step that you mentioned, those are exactly all of the right steps to ensure that that doesn't happen next year. I, I would like to invite the administration to evaluate ways, not just to use that, but to provide some of that back to the community and yield hit our targets for what we're seeing.
Competition.
Thank you, Lunita. Lots of detail. Really appreciate your work there.
You recommend this?
Yes. Any, seeing no comments, do I have a motion to approve? What, is that right?
The mayor budget adjustment.
Oh. Do I have a motion to approve the mid-year budget adjustment? But may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries you unanimously. Board will now move to the consent agenda items, which include a personnel report, school nutrition report, monthly financial report, FY25 budget calendar and parameters, and overnight out-of-state student travel. Dr. Whitaker, I guess Ms. Broom just continues.
Yes, she does.
The October 2023 the October 2023 financial reports are located in the STEM region. The general fund budget is approximately $98 million as of October. The district has collected 33% or approximately $33.2 million of the budget revenue for year to date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected this time last year. October revenue is 11% less than the amount of revenue collected for September, due primarily to the approximately $455,000 decrease in the amount of tax received from September to October. This decrease is normal for this time of the year. A large tax, a larger tax percentage of sales tax is traditionally collected in November and December. Earnings on investments is continuing to trend higher than anticipated. $57,000 was received by October, which is approximately $28,000 or 96% higher than the amount received in October 2023. Increase in earnings on investments, who actually reflects the increased earnings, is one of the midterm budget amendments. Our other revenue is trending as anticipated. Expenses, expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended 22% of the overall budget, or approximately $21 million year to date. For the month of October, expenses equated to approximately $8 million. This is 11% higher than that was spent in October 2023, which is due primarily to increases in salaries and benefits. The majority of October expenditures are for salaries and benefits, which make up approximately $70,000. For the month of October, there is a deficit of approximately $4 million, which means the district's expenditures for the month were $4 million more than the monthly revenue. The $4 million be taken from the fund balance with overall year to date, there is a surplus of approximately $11.8 million, due primarily to the larger feat of proxy tax collections posted in July. Last year's this time, the surplus was also $11 million. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year in account for the healthy fund balance of approximately $26.8 million, the unprojected Beginning Fund Balance of approximately $14.9 million. The fund balance has been decreasing since August, and this is also normal for this time of the year. October revenue for capital funds consists of approximately $586,000 from earnings on investments and slot six collection. Expenditures are trending as projected, and the $63,371 deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which is currently approximately $7.3 million. Since the year 24, anticipated expenditures for capital is approximately $11 million. Food nutrition revenue and expenditures are trending within the same range as previous years. Food nutrition revenue for the month of October was approximately $467,339, with the largest portion of revenue at $145,000 from student breakfast and lunch. Expenditures for the month of October were $287,642, which is of the projected expenditures for the month. The $179,697 surplus of revenue increased the fund balance for food and nutrition, which is currently $1.8 million. Special revenue funds consist of federal and state grants, not budgeted in general fund. We have closed out all of this year 23 grants, and as of October 31st, 2023, have been awarded approximately $2.5 million in grant funds. The district has been awarded grants for special education- The district has been awarded grants for special education and title funds for economic needs to help ensure student success for all students. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Broom. Any, any comments from anyone on the board? Next slide. Uh, do I have a motion to approve those consent items, one through four and six?
I move to approve consent items, one through four and six.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. White. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next, we will review the legacy park, track, and field contract amendments. Dr. Whitaker?
Chair Herndon, I call on Mr. Sergio Perez, the chief operations officer.
Chair Herndon, vice chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed members of the board, and superintendent Dr. Jim Whitaker. This is the request to increase the financial commitment of the Board of Education and the City of Decatur for the design, construction, and installation of the legacy park track and field facilities. We received two bids on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, precision turf for eight millions, two hundred and three thousand, hundred and twenty-four, and a sport turf for six million, eighty-one thousand, fifty-three dollars. The recommended actual seek approval of amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Decatur Police Facility Authority, the City of Decatur, and the Decatur Board of Education to increase the financial commitment of the City of Decatur and the Board of Education from three millions each to three point five millions each, a total of seven million for the design, construction, and installation of the track and field facilities at Legacy Park. Request approval from the Board of Education, the contract for Legacy Park Track and Field improvement to the sport turf for the amount of six million, eighty-one thousand, fifty-three dollars. Approval of Moscow Sport Lighting in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand for the athletic facilities lighting. Approval of real land planning for the amount of sixty thousand for the construction and infrastructure. Then approval of Georgia Power Company in the amount of fifty thousand to address utility relocation. The costs associated with these actions have been allocated with a plus six capital funds. Do you have any questions?
May I read the motion statement to increase the financial commitment for Legacy Parks and Track and Field Facilities?
One, one question. On the precision and sports turf, was the reason to go with the sports turf simply budget reasons, or there, were there other factors taken in?
It's two million.
Just the two million dollars. Okay, thank you.
I moved that the city schools of Decatur Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to amend the Legacy Park Track and Field intergovernmental agreement.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to accept the contract amendment?
Move to accept the contract amendment?
Uh, Board Member Utz makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Johnson Davis, second motion. Any discussion or additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sergio. Uh, moving on to policy, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present three policies for second read action.
Thank you. Good evening again, board members. We have three policies for second read action. First up is policy IHA grading system. With approval, this policy would be effective beginning in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. I would also like to acknowledge that, as discussed in previous board meetings, regulation will be developed that will provide more specific details on how this grading policy will be implemented. The recommendation is, I recommend to approve policy IHA grading system effective beginning in twenty-four, twenty-five school year for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the policy IHA grading system effective twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year for action?
So move.
Johnson Davis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Board Member Utz. Any discussion, questions?
Uh, one question, I'm sorry.
But.
Was there, when this was up on assembly, did you get any community feedback about this specifically?
It was no, it has been up and open for public review and none was received.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their hard work on it. I mean, this is very foundational really to, to moving the system forward, so thanks to yours and all teams, to everybody's work.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Next up is policy KM, Visitors to School. For the record, no feedback was received on that from Simmons. I recommend to approve both policy KM, Visitors to School, for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to policy KM, Visitors to School, for action?
Move.
Board Member Utz makes the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Board Member White, second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, Ms. Lynch, recommendation?
And finally, is policy IKB, Controversial Issues. I recommend to approve policy IKB, Controversial Issues, for action.
Any, I mean Carmen's question, it's such a good one.
Once again, no feedback.
We're waiting on you to say so.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy IKB, Controversial Issues, for action?
So move.
Board Member White makes the motion. May I have a second? Davis, any discussion?
Again, thanks to the team for this. I know this took a lot of work to get here. It's been better part of the year, particularly to Dr. Robinson and her team. We really appreciate us being able to impact this.
I just felt, felt that the less community focus voice here, who may not always attend the board meetings, know that we have read and discussed these, um, policies and revisions several times and stuff, three times.
At least three.
At least three months.
Right. And so, um, as we are, there's been no discussion, because we have assessed it pretty fairly.
Clarification.
Thank you, James.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you.
We're ahead of schedule?
Yeah.
I think we have some people here for public comment. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, um.
No, they're here for Tasha White Day.
Oh, Tasha, it is Tasha White Day, everyone.
It is Tasha White Day.
Um, that's official with the city.
It's official.
You can look it up. All right. The following information is included in the board policy manual, and members of the public also acknowledge this information when they signed up to speak. This is a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in, and in doing so, be asked to state their connection to CSD and/or the City of Decatur. To allow time for other business, public comment will be limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, the public pet comment period may be extended. The time limit for all speakers is three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment are not allowed to yield the floor or transfer unused time. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body. They should not be addressed to individual board members. It is up to our discretion that persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should also be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list any complaint about a specific person or personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board strictly prohibits language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor, disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin to verge into an area of hate speech or defamation, I will ask the speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters. They should be, they are encouraged to submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made. Instead, a member of the admin team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. I will add in that at three minutes, I will ask you to cede the floor and to respect everyone's time. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Our first speaker is Tazin Ajad.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Tazin Ajad, and I've been a resident in the City of Decatur since twenty eighteen. My children attend city schools of Decatur, but today, I'm also the mother of Wadea El-Sayyoun, a six-year-old Palestinian boy fatally stabbed twenty-six times in Chicago. Today, I'm also the mother of Tishan, Hanan, and Thesin, three Palestinian students shot in Vermont. Today, I'm also the mother of nine thousand, seventy-seven Palestinian children killed in Gaza. Today, I'm also the mother of eighteen thousand Palestinian children who have been wounded and are undergoing medical procedures without proper medication. Today, I'm also the mother of twenty-four Palestinian, twenty-four thousand Palestinian children who have lost their own families. I've always thought of Decatur as a safe haven, but in the last two months, I've been called a terrorist, an anti-Semite, an animal, and other horrific means for simply asking others to remember their humanity, their compassion, and their kindness, which we thought was at the core of our values here. But I've never felt more afraid and silenced than I have living as a Muslim in the City of Decatur in two thousand and twenty-three. City Schools of Decatur is known to teach about the oppression of Black and Native Americans and the horrors of the Holocaust. We've worked with parent groups to bring light to Asian-American hate, LGBTQ equality, and people living with disabilities, and yet, the school board is only further promoting Islamophobia, anti-Arab hate, and anti-Palestinian hate by censoring educators and students. In a time when over twenty thousand Palestinians have been killed and almost two million displaced, the school board is creating an unsafe space for Palestinians, for Muslims, and for Arab students, and while this war seems worlds away, it's impacting us right here in America with the rise of Islamophobia. Instead of showing compassion and empathy, the school board has chosen to cave into pressure and remove Palestine from the Model Arab League, showing children that it is okay to erase a people, that it is okay to erase history, that it is okay to erase diversity of thoughts. While other school districts are banning books, in Decatur, we are banning kindness. We are banning humanity. We are banning Palestine.
The next speaker is Hassan Rizvi.
Hello, my name is Hassan Rizvi. I've been a resident of the City of Decatur for eight years, son at the town school and the City of Decatur school system, and I have two other children who will be joining in the next few years. I'm here to voice my concerns, which are shared by other parents who I've spoken with who are afraid to speak publicly or about actions taken by the school district, specifically the cancellation of DHS students from representing Palestine in the Model Arab League, and the action taken to investigate and reprimand the district employees as a result of leaked email and pressure from parents. I understand that I cannot discuss personal matters here, so regarding that issue, I will simply say that the public information about the case has made my community and my family feel excluded and unwelcome. The staff members' actions were doing the exact opposite, you're creating an inclusive environment for a vulnerable population. Regarding the Decatur High School Model Arab League, I'm concerned about the decision to not allow students to represent Palestine in the upcoming Model Arab League conference. As you probably know, anti-Palestinian bigotry and Islamophobia has been running rampant in this country. A six-year-old boy was found to death, and three college students were shot because they were Palestinian. Besides these horrific crimes, there have been softer forms of this bigotry. Teachers have decided to cancel Palestinian film festivals, art houses have removed art created by Arab artists, and hotels have decided to not host Muslim advocacy groups. And now, school systems have decided that Palestinian, Palestinian identity is too controversial to even acknowledge. The city school, the City of Decatur school system appears to celebrate its diverse student body, that proclaims to have a culture that honors all students and staff regardless of cultural or racial background. At a time when there are over twenty-five thousand Palestinians who have been killed or missing under the rubble, the vast majority being civilians, how do you honor us? By ignoring us. You have Arab students and their families who are grieving, you have Muslim students and their families who are grieving. The CSD employees shared resources embraced my community and was written in a true spirit of inclusivity. I have spoken to members of the Decatur community, both color, white people, Muslims, Jews, Christians, and people of no particular religious affiliation. From this conversation, I can tell you that the perception is that our school system is also censoring any academic discussions that just humanizes the Palestinian people. Besides that, exclusion of representing Palestine limits the educational experience. By allowing students to explore various viewpoints, even though they may be sensitive, educational experience becomes richer and more reflective of the complexities inherent in geopolitics. We need transparency. Why was this, why was the decision made to pull representation of Palestine? Who made this decision? Was this just the easiest decision to make after pressure was applied? If this school system truly honors all students and staff regardless of cultural or racial background, why would they stop students from representing Palestine in the upcoming school activity? I urge you to reconsider this decision and to also ensure that our school district is making decisions in the best interest of all students and families, and to abide by the spirit of inclusivity and equity that we claim to.
Next speaker is Rahim Snow.
Hi, Rahim. Members of the board, my name is Rahim Snow. I am a Decatur parent and a Decatur resident. I am here to share just a few thoughts on the issue of Palestine that has been happening. Um, I want to start with a chronic verse that says, "Halaqabum min nafsin wahidathan", and it is God saying that he has made us all out of a single soul, out of a single being. So we are parts of this larger soul. We are leaves from this larger tree. When some of the leaves are hurting, it affects the entire tree. And so, I want to make sure that we are giving Palestine a voice in this community. The, the, there, there are groups and forces and pressures that don't want us to talk about Palestine, that want to keep it as part of, um, some other topic, some other place happening somewhere else. It's not our problem, but I want you to remember that once upon a time, talking about Indigenous Americans and what they've suffered was taboo. Once upon a time, talking about the real horrors of slavery was taboo. Once upon a time, the, the topic of the Holocaust in Nazi Germany, uh, was taboo. Some people still don't believe it even happened. So I want to make sure that we, as educators, as parents, as residents of this community, are talking about Palestine, giving it a voice at the administrative level, at the staff and faculty level, at the student level. I was looking at your international baccalaureate, uh, learner profile, and I found how much language it has around not just teaching the students to be good students, but also citizens, global citizens, who have critical thinking skills and who care about what is happening on the other side of the world. And so, my request is, is that we've got to find a way to bring the topic of Palestine into the curriculum, into our offices, into our, uh, the, the, what the teachers talk about, what the staff talks about, and we need to normalize it, because anyone suffering is something that our students should know about. They should know, because this, this is not happening in the past. You know, five hundred years ago, this is happening right now. And as a resident, I am asking that you are not alone in doing this. You have our full support. We are happy to support your efforts in this regard. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is, is, is. The next speaker is Evan Gallegan. And I believe he may be going, is he on? Okay.
Okay. Okay. The next speaker is Zoe Barenco.
Hello.
Yes, listed in them, yes.
We can hear you.
Wow. Hello. All right, I'll go ahead. Dear Superintendent, thank you all for taking the time to listen to the concerns of the parents in the community. I believe that we, meaning the school board and I, are learning many new things about history, the impacts of words and equity. I'm grateful to be on this journey together. With regard to the City Schools of Decatur, the city of Decatur, the country and the world at large, I'm seeing people, many of whom may truly mean well and have the courage of their convictions, and yet knowingly or unknowingly spewing hateful rhetoric and causing damage, emotional and physical violence against our students, against Muslims, Jews, and the population at large. I truly do not understand why supporting one community has to be done at the exclusion or expense of another. In September of 2022, I wrote to the board about how the dress code unfairly targets girls of color. In December of 2022, I emailed the board to call out the silencing and obfuscation regarding a racial issue that was specifically harming Black students, but also destroying the trust of the administration by students of all colors. Last month, in my public comment, I spoke here about antisemitism in Decatur. What I'm seeing is a vast and disparate community of people and opinions who, due to a lack of balanced sources and research, have caused great harm to our community by, for example, instituting false propaganda disguised as curriculum, by involvement in one-sided extracurricular activities, et cetera. What curriculum standards are required for opposing viewpoints in the Intellectual Honesty in the Classroom Amendment? Would this policy allow radical anti-Israel material and activists into schools? A different example, would this also pave the way to welcome in the opposing opinion that the earth is flat or to deny that the Holocaust happened? Because these are certainly opposing viewpoints. We are at a critical juncture in history where the pendulum of public opinion is swinging to extremes at both ends. It is imperative that we deeply examine our source information before further deleteriously impacting the safety of all our children and the people they become. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Zoe.
Thank you. The next speaker is Hannah Rogers.
My name is Hannah Rogers. I'm in my 13th and final year as a CSC parent as my second child completes her senior year at Decatur High School. As a parent, I've had some complaints along the way, but I've always been proud of CSC for being a national leader in bringing a multiplicity of perspectives into the classroom and by granting teachers the autonomy to have frank conversations with students. As an Ivy World school, CSC leads the charge in studying data, text, and visual culture from all over the world and empowering students to critically examine information to inform their view. This semester, some of those conversations are getting shut down at school. Some teachers are fearful and some students are fearful. As an academic librarian, a large part of my job is critical... ...to teach teachers how to do the same. As a fellow educator, I am alarmed by the silencing that I'm witnessing in the City Schools of Decatur. We heard some Jewish parents at the last board meeting about their fears for their student safety, and my heart breaks for those parents. No one wants to see children suffer. No one wants to see students being marginalized for their belief, or their family, or their appearance, or their head covering, or where they came from, or when they arrived. Muslim, Arab, and Middle Eastern students are also suffering. This is made worse by some CSC actions that look at best biased and at worst Islamophobic. Suggesting that Palestine should not be represented by the DHS Model Arab League sends a message that the perspective of Palestinian people doesn't matter, that it does not deserve representation. This is a hurtful message. When materials are distributed from an Arab-based news source as a means of offering additional perspective on the ongoing war and that is treated as misconduct or even a crime, that too sends a message. Allowing me to stand with Israel posters in CSC classrooms while removing other flyers, that sends a message. These same debates are playing out all over the country, and we need to address them here too. I should not be afraid. I'm afraid. I am afraid, I should not be afraid to stand up for my child's friends, but I am. I am afraid of being called something that I am not. But I cannot stand by while children are afraid to go to school and their parents are fearful of asking for help. I'm sorry that I have not spoken up sooner, and I know that there are others out there who share my fear and my sorrow. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sophia Rushi.
Hi, I'm a CSC parent, and I have planned to speak, but as a Muslim woman and as a journalist, I'm just afraid that my words could be misconstrued. I also used to work at Al Jazeera, but they could be misconstrued and that could be used to target me and my work. So I will be... But I will be following up responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alexandria. Do not want to attend. Yeah, it's just like...
No problem. Thank you.
Please say it.
Forhobit, sir.
Very often, thank you.
My name is Alex Forhobit, sir, and I'm a Black female Jewish mom of a CSC student. My comments tonight are not from the perspective of one category of my identity, but the intersectionality of my identity as well as my experience. And I first want to thank the board and DHS administration for the work in progress to advance inclusion and for passing the controversial issues policy today. Our children will need to be equipped with the skills to effectively navigate the complexity and nuance of controversial topics. My question is a follow-up to passing this policy today is how will we ensure our educators are knowledgeable enough to properly address the complexities of given topics brought up in their class by students? And two, how do we make sure that teachers have the proper training to effectively facilitate these layered and uncomfortable conversations? How will we support a teacher and their preparedness and access to legitimate resources for both sides of these conversations? Dartmouth recently held a series of conversations on the quote-unquote horrific events unfolding in Israel and Gaza. The panelists were academics who have spent their career immersed in the history and study of the region from both the Middle Eastern and Israeli Studies Department. They came together to proactively facilitate these conversations across the student body. They were clear about the objectives of these discussions, which was not a call to action. It was not a desire to teach students what to think, but to teach them how to think through and have these discussions. They also stressed the importance of community. These professors were available to all students and checked in with them afterwards, whether they were Israeli or the Muslim Studies students. Counseling services were also accessible and routinely referenced by the professors. How are we supporting students after these controversial discussions? Are we ready with the additional training and access to resources for teachers? Are we willing to invest in additional resources and training for counselors to potentially support follow-up conversations from these discussions for students who may be working through a range of... After passing this policy, and indeed with the comments that have happened today, the critical need to be able to facilitate these conversations among students and truly among fellow parents in the district to make sure that we are really pushing for an inclusion. I hope we're ready to step up and do the work to truly implement this as a district. Creating this policy is only the start. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kavita Rajana.
Like how I spelled it out?
Hey, I see it sonatically, yes.
Yeah, it's been a second since I've been up here. I'm Kavita Rajana. I'm a longtime resident of Decatur. I'm the parent of twin eighth graders at Beacon Hill Middle School. And I'm reading an edited version of a group letter that was recently sent to the board, the superintendent, and a few other people that I wrote with Adam Horowitz, Rahim, and Jennifer Snow, and Andrew Hollis. We're all CSC parents. So I'm not sure what I can say, but we were alarmed that an equity director was suspended for sharing a resource document on events contextualizing what is happening in Gaza from an educational standpoint. In response to suggestions as to resources shared or antisemitic, we categorically reject this. The censorship of Palestine within CSC is a grave issue of academic freedom that contradicts the district's stated values and puts students at risk. This censorship is no different than trying to limit how race and racism can be taught in the classroom. These efforts to limit discourse on Palestine are rooted in bias and simply an attempt at pure history and critical discussion of current events. We must lift up the work of the person who was reprimanded and other staff and teachers who share stories and resources for learning about people and struggles for justice that are often rendered invisible. We are parents of South Asian Jewish Black and Muslim children who are already marginalized in CSC. Our children will be at greater risk if CSC limits discourse on Palestine by perpetuating the view that even mentioning Palestine is inherently biased. We have seen violent hate crimes recently amid the rise in anti-Palestinian racism and Islamophobia in the U.S. With the recent brutal shooting of a six-year-old Palestinian boy in Chicago and the shooting of three Palestinian college students in Burlington, we cannot allow this to happen in Decatur. We believe equity is integral to CSC. We ask that you adhere to the district's framework for equitable student outcomes in order to sustain a positive culture and climate in which all of our students or staff feel safe, seen, and successful. Censorship, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian racism have no place in Decatur. Thank you.
Next speaker is Adam Horowitz.
My name's Adam Horowitz. I'm a parent of two eighth graders at Beacon Hill Middle School. And I'm also a Jewish resident of Decatur. I'm here tonight to speak in support of staff and those who are sharing resources about the ongoing genocide in Gaza. And the context here is important because, as I said, there is a genocide being committed. And as a parent in the district, I believe there's perhaps a topic no more important to be educating our children about. I was raised to say never again, and one important way to do that is through education. So here are some facts. In the past eight weeks, over 18,000 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza. Over 250,000 homes have been destroyed, 1.9 million people displaced. Of those killed, over 7,700 children. With that in perspective, there are an estimated 5,640 students in the entire City of Decatur School District. It has been reported in the AJC and other places that the district has received pressure from Jewish leaders in Atlanta that sharing this information is biased or even antisemitic. I'm here to flatly denounce that idea. Complaining antisemitism with sharing the information above or even criticism of Israel is actually wrong and does a great disservice to the fight against actual antisemitism, which remains essential. I ask that if there's going to be a discussion or process regarding alleged antisemitism within CSC, that it be an open and transparent process, and not one held behind closed doors. And I say this because I believe that the pressure... ...to tease is actually not about antisemitism. It's simply rooted in the desire to prevent the information that I shared above from being more widely known. It is an effort to censor Palestine in our school district and ensure that a narrative that favors Israel is the only one that is heard. In this way, it's no different from efforts to control or skew the versions of history that are taught in school. The City Schools of Decatur have stood up against those efforts, and I would expect it to do the same here. Finally, you might wonder why I didn't mention the other tragic deaths that took place on October 7. As we all know, there were people killed in Israel, and they also included children. At least 1,100 people were killed, and this included nearly 50 children. These deaths, as with all deaths, are tragic. But the reason I didn't mention them earlier is because there's no one here tonight or that we've heard about online telling you that they shouldn't be discussed. There's only Palestinian deaths. And discussing the killing of Palestinian children that is considered controversial, biased, or a reason for suspension. This double standard is rooted in anti-Palestinian racism, and I call on the school district to reject it. Please support those who are speaking out. Please support free speech, and please support academic freedom on Palestine.
The next speaker is Sarah Webb Phillips.
I'm the Reverend Sarah Webb Phillips, and I'm here with my husband, Reverend Dr. Ed Phillips, at the Cameron School of Theology. The past two days, we were in a conference with Indigenous people of what we call America now, and learned so much. And I remind you that we are on Mexcogi Native land. I was alarmed to hear about the disciplinary actions that were taken because I am on the National Board of an organization that seeks to build peace between Palestinians and Israelis, working with Jews and Muslims, Arabs, and Palestinians around the world. Because true peace will never be possible in the region without providing a homeland for the descendants of people who've been part of the region for thousands of years. Those descendants welcomed persecuted Jewish people to settle among them, and they lived in peace for many years until the Nazi. Until there is a true homeland place for Palestinians, there will be no peace. Students need to be able to have conversations about what is happening in the world that affects them. By perpetuating the view that discussing Palestine is inherently biased, CSC is ignoring the ways Muslim and Arab students and others are being impacted by the daily news of thousands of children being killed in Gaza. Actions or policies to censor discussions and other efforts that seek to limit discussions of race and racism in the classroom. When we moved to Decatur, we chose Decatur because of the city school system, and we are proud parents of a graduate, and even prouder that her education led her to a scholarship to Georgia Tech and led her to be a citizen of the world. And she gained that from the diversity of the City Schools of Decatur school system. We want and need our children to learn about justice, about standing up and doing the right thing. This includes speaking out and sharing information about injustices, even when it is not popular. And what a wonderful opportunity right now is, for this that has happened, to be a discussion that moves forward and helps our children see how adults can talk together and even be sorry for something that has happened and move ahead for the greater common good. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Aleah Collins.
I'm a Decatur resident and mom. I'm an educator, scholar, activist, and writer, and I'm a Jewish Georgian with Sephardic ancestry. I have a PhD in anthropology, and my research was in Israel specifically focused on Middle Eastern Jews, their experiences of state violence, eviction, and racism, and how this connects to experiences of Palestinian communities. I've worked on Israel and Palestine. I've been a university professor and also continue to teach a Middle East course for 11th grade for the last several years. After reading the AJC article in Decatur-ish, I was dismayed. No one should be disciplined for sharing resources about Gaza, sharing ways that people can navigate this particular time in this intense situation happening where the U.S. is involved and seeing it where almost no educational institutions are speaking about it in any meaningful way and are certainly not allowing students to be able to speak openly about their questions, access information, hear from people who they feel they can talk to. To share resources is one way to allow students, faculty, and others to be curious. Is curiosity not a part of the objectives of City Schools of Decatur? The only explanation of this kind of disciplining is said in one of the facts and findings. I'm not sure what I can say in that space, so I'm trying to do it without breaking the rules. Because this is an institution, CSC does not share the views of that person politically on the conflict, which means that person's personal opinion or bias was not part of the student-focused learning process. As an educator, I read that as because CSC does not share these political... these political views and therefore made the situation about political views rather than about resources that were educational and could spark curiosity. We are in a heightened state of anti-Palestinian racism, anti-Arab racism, and Islamophobia, along with antisemitism. We've seen in multiple civil rights organizations monitoring the situation that people in every institution are being shut down and silenced, fired, and disciplined for sharing information, for saying anything about Gaza. I find it fascinating that in Israel, this is also taking anything that shares something related to Gaza that is counter to the Israeli government narrative. Israeli Jews, Palestinians are being beaten, arrested, and fired. As an educator, I was able to speak openly to an entire high school. Their ability to ask questions, their maturity in pursuing curiosity, wanting to know more, wanting questions answered, a desire to know where they can put their energy because of the U.S. involvement in supporting Israel in this war. It affects our students and faculty. It affects our community. Coming after the equity coordinator for sharing resources is absurd, and sharing information about Gaza is not antisemitic. It's just sharing information and resources. According to genocide scholars and human rights officials, there is genocide taking place. The least that can happen is to bring resources to our educational communities and communities at large to investigate, understand, and act to end harming any group of people. When I looked through the resources on question, I tried to find what on earth could possibly be something you wouldn't want
Thank you.
staff, students, or faculty exposed to. Since this is the time to be paying attention, asking questions, and finding what's grounding as the world raffles with this genocide and the U.S. support of it.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Our children and our schools deserve better.
Next speaker is Becca Shepherd.
Hi, I'm Becca Shepherd. I am in my 15th year of being a parent in the school system. My kids have gone from Fraser Center to Plauron to Westchester, Fay, to Beacon Hill, to Decatur High School. Got one who is now in college. And I'm going to keep my statements really short. There are a lot of eloquent people in the stream who have a lot more important things than they've been in anything I would have to share, but when I read the article, the AJC article reporting on striking how disturbing it is for a school system which is supposed to promote critical thinking, education as a basis, to censor a staff member and to put him under investigation and threaten his career and livelihood all for sharing resources that should not be controversial, that should be available. This school district already has a retention problem. I think it's well-known that we are one of the lowest paid for staff members and teachers. We have amazing teachers, but they're teaching in an uphill battle, and to create this censorship and this, even these barriers to them, I don't know how we expect to keep qualified staff, to keep teachers, to keep educators and staff when we are making clear that we will run people out for the, for sharing ideas. This should not be controversial. Oh, your brilliant, my thanks.
The next speaker is Brian Kammer, and I believe is Zoom.
Brian, are you there?
Hello, hello.
There you go. All right, Brian.
Hello. Sorry about this. My Zoom setup is not fantastic. I am a 13-year resident of the city. I have been paying tens of thousands of dollars in taxes to support the great city schools of Decatur. I simply want to say that basically I agree with what the previous speakers have been saying that, you know, to, to discipline this person for putting out resources to censor the topic of Palestine, those are things that inhibit education, that inhibit the free exchange of ideas, especially on this very critical and important topic that is, is, that is something that the board needs to, to change, and so essentially, I just want to register my agreement with the, with the previous speakers. Thank you.
Final speaker for today is Muali Davis.
Good evening. Muali Davis. I'm a resident of the city, in the city of Decatur for over a decade, and I stand here as a human rights rights attorney and a community organizer focused primarily on creating safe, what we call safe, sacred, and healing space for African-American men. And many of those men are here. Some of them are here this evening, but they've raised their hands. They're here because a man who you all have decided to discipline has been a part of the work that we do voluntarily, trying to create safe space for people to just be. And one of the greatest concerns is what's so sad is that somehow we have said that who did the Palestinian voices should not be heard. And that's deeply disturbing. It's disturbing for the young men, and we seek to serve every week that we volunteer here in the city of Decatur. Many of those young men are Muslim, and we want them to be courageous. And we advocate that they are courageous both in school as well as with their peers, and they serve as leaders in our community. And it's important that they not feel as though they will be silenced because they believe that all lives are in fact precious, and they should be honored and respected. And so to think for a moment that we have a situation today where we cannot say and honor the sacredness of the children, Palestine, without being called antisemitic and scary. Deeply, deeply scary that there are people that are here that and people who are not here that are afraid. They are afraid for their jobs. They are afraid that they will be canceled because all they want to do is say that those children, their lives matter, that we should not have to be silenced, that even as a school, we should not withdraw and not prevent our students from representing Palestine. It's as if if Palestine and Palestinians' existence is a threat to the existence of others just by their mere existence. That is scary because that proposition says then Palestinians must all be wiped off the face of the earth in order for other folk to feel safe. And that's what we're advocating. Then we are in fact leading this conversation. And so we again ask that you reconsider those decisions as it relates to our brother and as it relates to us. Thank you.
Unprompted, I want to apologize. Board member Utz had a flight to catch, and he wanted to leave before board comment, but stuck around as long as he possibly could, so that's why he left. He didn't ask me to share that either. I just felt compelled. We would like to thank all of the speakers, seriously, for taking your time to be here tonight. As board members, it is incredibly important for us to hear the concerns from our communities. We do take your comments into consideration. The next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 9, 2024, again at the Wilson Center, and we will follow the new board meeting cadence. I've been asked about it twice this week, where we start executive session early and we start community feedback always at 6:30 PM. We will also have our next community meeting on Tuesday, January 23 at Beacon Hill Middle School. The community meeting is this board's commitment to two-way conversations with the community about our visions and values. Topics such as budget, compensation, student outcomes will be discussed. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thank you.